Good afternoon. It is Monday, February 7th, 2022. The time is 1:01, and this is a school board workshop. Today on the agenda, we have human resource presentation for 90 minutes with Mr. Dotick and HR team, the agenda review of the February 8th, 2022 regular agenda for 60 minutes, and our prioritizing the workshop topics. I know Ms. Javon Ellie is not here with us today. She is in Tallahassee, and Ms. Patrica is five minutes out, and we are here to start the meeting. So, thank you, Mr. Dotick. If you will please introduce who's with you.
Sure. Good afternoon, Board. Dr. Savage, Ms. Bruno, Shelley, Dr. Halsted is with me, Dr. Shelley Halsted. She is a coordinator in human resources and works directly for me. She is kind of our guru of data and surveys and has been for a number of years. So, we're here today to present information to the Board regarding where we have been, where we are, and where we're going with regard to the status of retention, recruiting, and our general employment situation. We also were going to be joined by Ms. Rivera. Unfortunately, she's out sick today, so we will cover her area of recruiting without her, unfortunately. The information in our presentation is fairly comprehensive, so it's up to the Board whether or not you want to ask questions as we go or leave questions to the end. I have no preference necessarily, however, the presentation does flow, so... But we can certainly go through the data, and then you could ask questions about it if you choose, but the data does have a flow to it. So, you all tell me how you want to ask questions.
Well, why don't you go ahead and start the presentation? And then if there is a need for a question, then we will go ahead and proceed with that. If not, we'll wait till the end and then collect them all.
Perfect. So, the first slide is what we're talking about today, which has, because of social media and the way things work in America or around the world, when something big is happening, we give it a name. And the name for what is happening around us is the Great Resignation. This has also been known as the Big Quit, and Dr. Spyro just leaned over and told me he heard today a phrase called the Great Upgrade. People are upgrading their professional lives. So, depending on how we take this, but we do have a name for this, and this is the Great Resignation, and it has obviously impacted this school district. So, the first slide is data from October 2021 from Education Week. And this slide shows that, of course, we are not alone nationwide. This was a survey where individuals on the left talked about, or were polled as to staffing shortages at their school or district this school year, and this is our current school year, 2122. And at that time, in October, it was very severe, or severe, to up to 40% of the respondents said they were having staffing shortages at their location. If you look on the right, which I find intriguing, the top three were substitute teachers, bus drivers, and paraprofessionals. And that is no different in our school district. That is, our statistics essentially mirror that, and if you see fourth, at 48%, were full-time teachers, where they have struggled to hire a sufficient number of those individuals. Next is a follow-up survey that was done a month later, in November of 2021, where the shortage is significantly worsened, and it was up to 52% versus the beginning of the school year, which we're talking August and September. So, we know one thing about November, Omicron had come into our lives, and we have experienced a similar trend here. I arrived in September in this role, and the word Omicron was just beginning to be stated, and obviously, we saw a significant spike in October, November, and December here in our district and around the country relative to vacancies. Go ahead.
So, as Mr. Dotick presented, we have some national data, national trends to look at, but in terms of Lee County, we want to see what the size of our problem is, like how is it impacting us directly? And so, we have a few things that we're looking at here. They're categorized in two ways. We have vacancies that are longer-term vacancies where people have terminated, and then, as you'll see, we have these short-term vacancies where people are out on leave for between one and 45 days. But both of those are combining to impact the school's ability and the district-level ability to operate efficiently and safely. The termination history is what we're looking at now. So, if you recall, back in FY '20, we had fairly low turnover rates for us. We had 20% for instructional staff and 23% for non-instructional. And we did, particularly for teachers, see that spike at the end of FY '21. Went up to 29%. And we knew that was going to happen because a lot of people stayed in that environment of FY '20 where no one was sure what was going to happen. And then, as we got more clarity in that, more people turned over. So, what this is showing is the most recent data. So, we can't compare FY '22 because we're still in the middle of the year, but what we can do is look at the months. So, what you'll see is we start with July, because for us, that's obviously the beginning of the fiscal year, and we go in order down to January. You'll see instructional on the left and non-instructional is on the right. These are counts of terminations by month. The green is going to be the older data, FY '20. The blue is FY '21, and then the orange you'll see is the FY '22. So, just by looking at the bars, you can see the difference between FY '22 and the previous years in almost every month. And you'll see at the bottom, there's a year-to-date count, year-to-date count. For instructional staff, the '21 and the '22 were actually quite similar, but when you look at the non-instructional, that's quite a big difference for us. And that's one of the things the data is telling us, that we're losing non-instructional staff right now at greater rates than we've seen in the past. And so, that's contributing to the shortages that we have.
Yeah, I would just point out that, exactly what Shelley said, there's been 161 more individuals that have terminated from the non-instructional versus last year at this time. So, just trying to make that up, we don't have 160 applicants possibly in a week, so it's a very difficult chore that we're trying to deal with.
Can you explain, so the non-instructional, can you categorize, I mean, who are they?
Non-instructional are paraprofessionals, bus drivers, food service workers, custodians.
All of the above.
Yes, all of the above, other than essentially what we would typically call teachers and administrators.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yep.
So, another way that we can look at the size of the problem is looking at our job advertisements. So, you'll see this is arranged in the same manner, going from July to August and so on until the most current month of January. And again, instructional is on the left and non-instructional is on the right. The orange is the current year, the blue is last year. We always expect in July and August to see a lot of job postings. The continuation of them, and then the difference between this year and last year, is what we want to point out in terms of, not only are we terminating people, not we're terminating, that's not the right way to say it, people are terminating, and we're going to look at the reasons why, but people are terminating, but also, we're having these postings that are at a greater rate than they've been in the past, too. I do want to clarify, I know that there's some regular reporting around job vacancies. These are a little bit different. These are counts of advertisements by month. So, they're not as filtered down as some of the other things that you may have seen in the past and may not be able to be compared to some of that data. So, I just wanted to point that out. The goal here is, again, how big is our problem? So, we looked at it with terminations, then we're looking at it with job advertisements.
And I would just point out, you can see January, again, the rise in postings for 239 in non-instructional and 182 in instructional. So, and this is based on Shelley's initial posting dates, correct? Okay. So, the initial time a job was posted. Go ahead. So, in addition to terminations, like we just discussed, and vacancies, we're having to deal with what we're calling short-term vacancies, when people are sick or ill or taking care of a family member. And Dr. Savage, in business cabinet, charged me with a portfolio item, as he calls it, regarding short-term vacancies. And short-term vacancies have been defined by us as up to 45 days, when an individual is out for up to 45 days. And Shelley, with her ability to prepare surveys, did just that with our principals. We surveyed them for the impact of short-term vacancies on them, and we received 55 responses to this survey. And as you can see, the frequency of school-based absences, the importance of them, or the occurrence of them, I should say, is with teachers, more than half of the respondents, 56%, indicated that they have a teacher out every day. And 15% three to four times a week. So, upwards of over 70% of our schools are dealing with a teacher absence three to four or every day of the week. The second highest, of course, was paraprofessionals, and I don't have to point out to you all that those are the people that deal with our children face-to-face every single day, paraprofessionals and teachers.
So, we recognize that frequency by itself is not as useful as having a context for that frequency. And so, the next slide that we're going to talk about provides that context in terms of coverage difficulty and disruption caused.
So, on the left is the difficulty the principals are having covering these positions. And if you would look in the middle of the left box, paraprofessionals lead the way. And that's a combination of a couple of things, we believe. One is, paraprofessionals are a significantly low-paid position in this district historically, and we don't have substitutes for paraprofessionals. So, their ability to fill those coverage areas for paraprofessionals has proven very difficult. Honestly, I was quite surprised that it was higher than teachers, but it is. So, that's our most difficult area to cover. The second box on the right is the disruption that it's causing when individuals are out. So, of course, the teachers have said 60%, a five, have rated it a five when a teacher is out, which I don't think is any surprise to any of us. When a teacher is out, it's clearly the most disruptive. And then, second was paraprofessionals, and then custodians.
So, Ms. Gittens, question?
Okay, let me make sure, because this one, when I looked at it, gave, good afternoon, first of all. Thank you. This is the one that gave me a little bit of angst, like, so this is just answering the questions on the survey. This is not saying that on a daily basis, 23% of paraprofessionals are out and 56% of...
That's correct. It's just how they rate them, one through five.
And the previous slide.
Okay, so in other words, you asked educators, or who did you ask on this?
Principals.
So, principals are giving you the data that 23% of the absences are paraprofessionals. Am I correct?
No. Principals are rating how, which slide are you talking about, Ms. Gittens?
I'm on number seven, that you were just talking about.
The frequency or the...
The frequency.
Okay, so the front slide.
So, with the frequency, yes, it's from the principal. So, we had asked the principals to rate, as it says, for each of the staff types, how frequent that absence is. So, this is the information from them. It's not saying that, you know, 23% of the absences are paraprofessionals. What it's saying that 23% of the principals said that they have at least one paraprofessional absent every day and one teacher absent every day for the 50%, I think, 56%.
Okay, so that's where it's confusing, as to the 23 and the 56. I mean, so in other words, principals said that every day, 56%...
56% of principals said. So, if you think about our school locations, 56% of our school locations every day are missing at least one teacher, or 23% of our school locations every day are missing at least one paraprofessional.
So, do you see how that's confusing, though, looking at this? Anyway, the frequency of, this is frequency of absences.
Yes.
But it's saying each principal, it's just, to me, it's a little confusing.
I understand you're confused. The question that was asked is on the left.
Yes. No, I get that, but looking at this data and saying frequency, it comes across like, you know, every day, 56% of, maybe no one sees it that way but me, but...
I see how you could read it that way.
No, and I'm glad you asked, because we do, obviously, there's people watching this as well.
Right, and that's see it the same way.
So, I think it's important to clarify, yes, that 56% of the schools are missing at least one teacher every day.
So, if we're going to leave this information out there, can we add to this slide under whatever, answer questions, or put some additional, e.g., 56% of our schools miss at least one?
Teacher, every day.
Teacher, every day. That, to me, clarifies.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We done with that one? Okay. So, we're on to really one of the big questions that I know you all, and several times, have asked me since I came back, why are people leaving? And there's really no great answer necessarily, but we do have data. Some people, as we know, have simply just dropped out of the job market. We also know that others have chosen new professions, but we're going to show you our most recent data that suggests that we're probably no different than the rest of the workforce in the area and possibly around the country, for that matter.
So, we've had discussions over many years now about why our staff leave, and the result of those discussions, and the result of doing analysis and working towards improvements and where we can best put our resources, has been, we now look at the reasons they're leaving from multiple angles, understanding that not one source is best, but if we combine all the sources, we can kind of triangulate to what we think the biggest pain points are. So, the first source that we have, that in some ways is the most comprehensive, is from PeopleSoft, which is where we collect the information. When someone terminates, we get the personnel action form, and that has a reason on it. So, this is representative of the reason history for instructional staff for terminations. FY '22 is included here. Note, it's as of February 1st, so it's not the best comparison to FY '21, but we did include it as a percentage to help you get an idea. There'll be things that haven't happened yet, so contract expiration happens at the end of the year. That's why that's 0% for FY '22. A highlight, obviously, for this one, I think, is the increase in personal reasons, which is a bit of a black box here, but we'll talk more about that as we go through the other data that we have.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to point out, which I think is somewhat within our control, is currently, if you look under FY '22, probationary release is at 5.1%. So, as you probably know, probationary releases have to happen within a certain period of time, depending on the employee group. Well, I believe we need to focus a little bit on that, because that's preventable. We don't have to release someone on probation. So, if that means they need more training, they need something else that they're not telling us, or that we may not be able to provide, but maybe we could, we need to know that, because we need all hands on deck. We need everybody working, and to release people at that high a percentage already this year is a concern for human resources, and we need to address that through PD or other things to try to get people to stay.
So, I do want to clarify that when we talk about termination, we're meaning terminated employment with the district.
Correct.
So, there are people that, when we look at our overall turnover numbers, like we do with the strategic plan, that includes people that have transferred to other locations but are still employed with the district. This does not have any of that transfer data. These are all people that have left employment, and as you can see, retirement is another reason that's on there. So, it includes the retirees that have left employment.
Go ahead, Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Gittens.
With all due respect, I take not that much off from this, because I've done a whole lot of reading on this subject. I have a whole lot of friends here and in other states, and the bottom line is, not only underpaid, but not respected. And to say, in Florida, in Florida, the teachers are, in some schools, and I'm sorry, but this is the truth, in some schools, the principals don't respect the expertise of their teachers and keep piling more and more and more on the teachers. And if they're not particularly in love with a particular teacher, then they really make life hard for that teacher, and that's a fact. It's not just here, but that's how it operates in the world. But on top of that, in Florida, now we have parents that are constantly wanting their eyes and cameras in the classrooms. Our legislators are piling, it's amazing to me, every time I read through the bills that are being, that seem like they're going to be pushed right through and no doubt get DeSantis's signature, so many of them just add to this disrespect. And the research that I did, you know, my last, my op-ed was on this very topic, and that's what it is. I'm absolutely positive that that's what it is, and it didn't just start with COVID, but COVID is like the icing on the cake, the cherry on top, like of all of these things. And now, we get this disrespect coming from everywhere, and there's nowhere here that's addressed. It can't be, because it's not a black and white piece of data. And I know we're data-driven, but frankly, when I look at this, I look back on my own experience, and the experience reported to me by friends of mine who have been teaching for 20, 30 years, and all of it points to, I love this profession, but I just can't take it anymore. I'm done. And until, you know, we can look at data all day long, but until we address what our legislature, and in Texas, and Oklahoma, and other states are doing to teachers, and what our own principals do to teachers, this crisis will not be solved. So, I'm sorry, you know that I'm very passionate about this, because this was my lifetime career, and it just makes me ill to see what's happening in some states. And as I said, my friends who are still teaching or recently retired in Texas, they are feeling the same thing. So, it's what we need to do something about, and we just don't speak up enough about it. And I'm going to speak up as a board member, and I'm going to continue speaking up. And I'm done now.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Appreciate your comments. Ms. Gittens, please.
I find it interesting on this slide 10, the instructional staff termination, that if we look at the retirement, whether it be for personal, personal meaning early retirement or just personal needs.
Let me clarify for you. So, personal is a reason that they can select, and that, for us, is a little bit of a black box, and I think it probably, a lot of the things that were just spoken about fall into that. Retirement is a different reason, and it would be lower for FY '22, because typically, people retire at the end of the school year.
They're not waiting.
But now, they're not waiting, so we do see a number of that. But I would expect that by the end of the year, the retirement percentage would likely increase to be similar, at least to what it's been in the past.
Yeah, I just found that, two things interesting about those two lines. On the personal, you know, we attribute a lot of the things that are happening to COVID, but we did not have COVID in 2019. And the jump in retirement from 18 to 19 is like 6%, 7%, which is interesting. which is interesting, and then it just continues to get higher. But it's like it's saying to us, well, what happened between 18 and 19 that we're not seeing? And the other thing is, I don't know, that 7.5 in the retirement reason. So in other words, you're saying that that reason is going down.
Well, unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, but it's that 7.5% is representative of the year we're in. And so I would expect by the end of the year, it would be a higher percentage.
So, right, because I know a lot of people retired in December.
Correct.
That could have waited until the end of the year. So, yeah, so in other words, that's looking kind of bad right now, too. All right. I just would be interested to know in 19, what were we doing or not doing that was causing those numbers to go up, so?
Well, a contributing factor could be an aging workforce. But I would have to go back and look at, you know, how many people did we have that were potentially ready for retirement, the percentage that decided to do that? So that would be certainly something we could investigate, particularly around retirements. And it may be, there may be another cause that isn't that, that would be interesting to identify.
Well, I would really like to know what that was because we just, like I said, keep talking about 20 and 21 and COVID.
Right.
So what else could we have done? Thank you.
So this is the same data in terms of coming from the Personal Action Forms in PeopleSoft, the same timelines, but it's for the non-instructional staff, rather the instructional staff.
Can I ask real quick, because I know I've heard this out there in the community, the deceased one?
Okay.
It's very high on both of those that you just showed on 10 and 11. Is it because of the aging population that we have? We would not have any knowledge, or has that been because of COVID, or?
I don't know, and I would be remiss to even guess, but I do see what you're saying, special fiscal year 22, this year, it's up to 2.2%. So, but it has risen and then went down again in FY21, but it's up again, so.
2.2 and 2.7, I think it was. That was, I thought was pretty interesting.
Yeah, the other thing I would point out on this slide for this current year, once again, we, you know, our probationary releases are high again. And accepted other employment. And that's, you know, the exodus we've talked about where support staff, because this is who this slide applies to, have left for other jobs. And that is within our control. I mean, it certainly is. It's just a matter of whether or not we have the wherewithal to try to get in that situation where we want to compete. And if the government will certainly allow us to do that with the funds that they provide us. So, but it is within our control to try to prevent people from moving to other employment.
Ms. Gittens? The other thing that might be interesting to share is that moves from the areas, 5.9. But there, what's the percentage of people moving to the area?
Right.
To see, is it equivalent, is it less, is it the same? Because if it's around the same, then it's, you know, a flat line. But if there's more people moving here that are potential employees, that would be an interesting thing to see as well.
Is there any other comments on that one? I just think that would be kind of hard to figure out who's moving into the area that would be.
Well, no, we were just talking about, they have teachers every day from out of Florida. So I'm just saying, what percentage of those hirees that we have are out from out of state?
Yeah, we could potentially figure that out, absolutely.
Thank you.
So as I started out saying, we try to look at multiple sources of data to help triangulate the issues. And this is from the annual instructional survey that we started a few years ago, and I've got the two most recent years for comparison. This year's, the FY22 one, was just out the past couple of weeks. So we don't have the FY22 data yet to look at. For this slide, the idea was to get a sense of what the climate was in the schools during FY20 and during FY21. On every year that we've done this survey, one of the questions we ask is what it says here. If a friend asked me, I would recommend that they take a job at my current school or department. It says "or department" because there's teachers, obviously, in the building that answer the survey as well. And we use this question as a marker of satisfaction. So for teachers that are willing to recommend a friend, that's a potential marker of satisfaction with their workplace. Where people aren't wanting to recommend their friends, we're looking at that as a marker of dissatisfaction. And so we use this. We have a number of items on the survey around things like teachers having a voice or the support of administrators, those sorts of things. So we connect the satisfaction here, the agreement here, with those sorts of things to help us target initiatives that we have. So having said that, I wanted to show you the comparison between FY20 and FY21 because we actually saw last year an increase in the strong agreement and a shift there, which to me was interesting, knowing how difficult last year was. I don't know what we'll see for this year. As I said, the survey was just out, so I don't have the data for that yet.
Yeah, and I would point out that the 25% that were, I would call them dissatisfied, went down to 19%. But that's, from our perspective, that's still too high. So, because honestly, if all of those people were to leave, 20% of the teachers all left, that's a difficult situation to deal with. And I believe our staff response to this was about 59%. Shelley, is that what you told me earlier?
For FY20, it was 59%. And FY21, it was 75%.
Went way up, so that's good.
Ms. Vaughn and then Ms. Gittens.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's any data. Early years of teaching, mid-career later. I think that would tell a lot. And, you know, it could be that some of the people that would have said disagree were already gone. Because we have lost a lot of people that have been, you know, I hate being so negative on this, but there's a lot going on out there that, I mean, if you just read social media across the country, what teachers are saying, not just here, but we're just, we can only take care of ourselves. It's a crisis, and I don't think the data, again, I know we're data-driven, but forgive me for being so unorthodox in taking some anecdotal information into this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens?
The only other thing that I would say about this Slide 12 is the concern that we hear all the time about surveys within the district, the fear of, you know, working at a school and saying, well, I wouldn't hire anybody to work here. You know, I wouldn't tell anybody to work here, is, can skew this information, I'm just saying.
And that's a valid concern. We do emphasize repeatedly that it's anonymous, but I understand that's a valid concern that you.
And there are some people that will never believe me.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the question, or the comment, rather, about years of experience actually transitions very well into the next slide, so thank you for that. One of the things that we have added in the past few years is we've started asking the instructional staff that are taking this survey their intentions. With the idea that we had an exit survey, which we'll get to in a few minutes, that captures when they're actually leaving, but let's look at their intentions to stay. And then the people that are saying they want to leave more quickly, figure out what their reasons are to try and address that earlier rather than waiting until they're out the door. And so we have here, again, it's an FY20 to FY21 comparison. And the question relates to how many more years they see themselves working in the district. So the first top bar is, probably should be red, not green, but it's zero. I plan to terminate this year. And then it goes up 1 to 2 years is next, 3 to 4 years, and so on. And I wanted to share that we do this because it connects to what we're going to talk about next. Do you want to add?
Yeah, I would just say that, so if you add them up, the 0, 1 to 2, and 3 to 4, which are a significant concern for Human Resources, in fiscal year 20, 32% of the respondents said that's how much longer they would stay. And it's about 26% in fiscal year 21. And we'll soon find out what it is this year. Hopefully, it goes down, but that's the current state.
So for the instructional staff that were on that end where they said they're terminating at the end of the year, they took the survey, or they're staying 1 to 2 more years, we asked them to select the primary reason why they're terminating. And you can see the bottom one is retirement. But then going up, we have salary and performance pay. Now, when you look at this, it's the past 2 years combined, or compared. So the blue is, not the past 2 years, sorry, this is FY21, which we had a 75% response rate for. The blue are the people that are terminating, or saying they're terminating at the end of that year. The survey was in November, so they're terminating by the end of May. And then the orange are the ones that are saying they're going to give us 1 to 2 more years before they terminate.
So the top 4 are essentially retirement, inadequate salary, working conditions, and leadership, which this centers around some of what Ms. Vaughn just spoke about. The fifth one is relocation. But I will say this, even with retirement, the top 4 are all things that we can control or at least impact. Whether people want to retire, whether they think they have an inadequate salary, working conditions, and the leadership in their buildings. So these are something that we're going to focus on, obviously, in Human Resources, to try to alleviate those being the top 4 reasons why people are leaving.
So this is also from the FY21 survey. You'll see 2 sets of data compared. On the left side, we asked about 15 factors, and we had the people, again, in that bucket of 0 years or 1 to 2 years I'm leaving, answer, rank these in the order that they would relate to their increased likelihood to stay. So what would have to change to have them stay? And then the ones on the right are the ones that positively or, sorry, positively influence their time with the district. So these are the people that are saying 3 or more years. And these are the things that they've seen as a positive influence. When you look at the positive influence side, you'll see that the top 2 things are the work itself. So the why, why we do this, why we're all here today. And then the second part is the relationships. And I, you know, we heard some conversation about that before, so I wanted to highlight that. And then on the left side, the people that are out the door potentially mentally, or about to be, the salary is popping up as the thing that they want changed.
Yeah, and I would just comment with the superintendent search that you all just conducted, I think both candidates that were finalists talked about relationships. And that appears to be a significant reason why people are positively reacting to the district and want to stay there, stay here. Obviously, salary is a significant aspect of what we need to try to improve for our employees in this district. And ironically, we have bargaining sessions with both our unions this week. And that's one of the charges the board has given the superintendent and us to work on. So it's not surprising that those that are considering leaving within 1 to 2 years list salary as the number one thing.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Just backing up because the 2 go together. But on Slide 14, at the bottom where it has general working conditions?
Yes.
13% that plan on leaving this year
Correct.
are doing so because of general working conditions. But then 9% will leave in the next 2 years because of working conditions. Am I correct in that?
Well, it would be 10.
She's looking at this one right here.
Because the 1 is 13 and the 1 is 9.
So the blue is representative.
Oh, yes.
So this is last year's data from November of last year. But at that time, you're correct. The blue line represents the people who said they were planning on terminating at the end of last year. And the orange is the people that said they would stay 1 to 2 years.
So then when we get this year's data, we'll know if we did anything to shift those 2 numbers around.
Correct.
Any predictions, or?
Do you have your crystal ball with you?
I didn't bring my purse with the crystal ball in it.
Well, and then, okay, so then on the next slide on the
Right.
15, working conditions. On the left, it's it's 10.8. Okay. Interesting. All right, thank you. I'll look at it some more.
So last year, we launched the non-instructional survey, which was modeled after the instructional survey. We did simplify it a bit, only because the instructional survey, we'd been building up over multiple years, and this was our first year. We also made this particular survey available in both English and Spanish. And so we don't have that FY20 comparison, but I did want to share the FY21 results for the same questions we just talked about in terms of recommend a friend and then how many more years you see yourself working at the school district.
And I would just point out that on the right, if you look from 0 to 4 years, how many more years do you see yourself? 33% only see themselves working here from 0 to 4 years. And that's significant.
So the non-instructional survey, we also had them rank those 15 items. And this was a single question that wasn't broken out. It was interesting that for the non-instructional staff as well, the work itself and the relationships also came out as top areas that positively influence their work here.
And I would also point out the third highest was responsibility. And I asked Shelley in the future if we could sort of drill down as to what that means. Does that mean a responsibility, the individual feels a responsibility to work here? Or to their families, or to themselves? I would like to know more about that. It's interesting that it's the third highest response on this slide, the responsibility. I think that's great. I just would like to know more about that to determine what the individuals mean that are responding to that.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's be a great idea. Ms. Gittens?
On the the ones that would leave, don't, that do you see yourself working in the school district in Lake County in 1 to 2 years? Do you have that disaggregated?
Ms. Gittens, are you on the same page that they were speaking on, or are you on a different page?
This slide, I think.
I'm just, yeah, because I thought they all go together. Anyway.
For the non-instructional survey, we're planning on adding that for this year, but this was our first year running it. And so we went back to the most simplified version we could. And as I said, the teacher one, we've been building up over the years and the relationship with the teachers in taking the survey. So we've increased, I think, our first response rate on the teacher's survey was around 30-something percent. Last year, we had worked up to 75%. So that's been a whole process. With the non-instructional, we're just starting that process, so some of the things were different. We wanted to keep the items, the length of the survey shorter for the first time out as we start to build that relationship with them. But that is something that we are looking to add for this year. We have not done the FY22 non-instructional survey yet, and that's, we're planning to launch that this spring now that we've got the instructional survey out there and we're working on wrapping that up.
Well, the main question I had about that, though, is are teachers that are just coming into the system planning on staying 2 years? Or are there teachers that have been here a long time that are nearing retirement, you know? Because it makes a whole big difference if you've got some coming in. So I'll do this for 2 years and do this and get a pension and I'm out.
That's right.
And we do on the survey, it's an excellent point. On the survey, one of the questions we ask is how long they've been teaching. And we have buckets for that because we know, if you think back to our strategic plan as a district, one of the areas that we've looked at is those first 5 years of teaching. And we know that historically, we continue to lose the first-year teachers at a higher rate, followed by the second and third-year teachers. And so on the survey, we did, as you pointed out, we want to have that information as well with the idea that we can then compare. well, with the idea that we can then compare those years of experience with different survey responses.
Okay, thank you.
Which brings us to another survey. We're almost done with the surveys. So, with the exit survey, so this is a bit of an older survey that we started several years ago now. The most recent version of it, it was revamped in FY20 to include non-instructional staff as well as instructional staff, and there were also many changes to the questions. There's two versions of this survey. One is expected to be completed by the supervisor, and that's what you're looking at right now. The other is expected to be completed, expected, asked to be completed by the exiting employee, and that's the next slide that we have. One of the things I want to clarify about the reasons given to the supervisor for leaving, these are on a scale of influence, and the idea is the extent to which that reason influenced the employee leaving. They are not ranked, it is not a forced selection of the primary reason. Someone could go in and say, I'll give 10, maximum influence for every single thing. So, it's not forcing them to pick one. I just wanted to clarify, it's the same when you see the next slide for the employee version.
And Shelley has told me that the significant numbers are eight and above, so, excuse me, if you look the, under the instructional for fiscal year 22, we have three areas that are above an eight, and for non-instructional support, we have two areas that are above an eight. So, those are obviously areas of significant concern for us, other job opportunities, family or health, which maybe we can't prevent, or maybe we can, depending on what that exact situation would be. And then, of course, inadequate salary and performance pay weighs heavily, as does retirement for the teachers.
I'll be quick.
Ms. Kittens?
Okay, so supervisors are being told, at a rate of 10%, the reason is other job opportunities, but the employees are saying other job opportunities is only 6.9.
Correct.
So, that's, I think that's the next slide, right?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Explain, well?
I mean, who's, I mean?
I could offer probably a few explanations, which I don't think are probably germane or accurate, because they would be my opinion, so.
Right.
But I think, I understand, and I think I had the same question when Shelley and I started looking at this data. So, there is always a potential for an exiting employee to not be completely honest with their supervisor or forthcoming. They may have other reasons, and they didn't want to tell them that. We don't know. What is important to understand is that the supervisors are mandated to fill this out. So, we hope we're getting data from everyone that has an exiting employee, although there are times when we think maybe that's not happening across the board. The exit survey for the employee version is completely voluntary. We have no way of compelling them to fill that out. However, since I've been here, we've been talking about finding out a more robust way to conduct exit interviews, and I know that's something the board has expressed to me. And we're working on that, because we can only be as good as our data, and if we don't know why people are absolutely leaving, or absolutely know why people are leaving, it's difficult to work on these issues. So, we are working on that. Shelley's a point person for that, to try to figure out how we can contact, and it may simply be phone calls to individuals, spending time talking to them on the telephone to tell us exactly, or please be honest with us, why you left. Right now, it's, they're sent a link, and if they don't click on that link, and they say, oh, I'm gone from that district, I'm not going to fill that out, there's nothing we can do to get that data.
But, if I may, if you do, if you are able to reach out and have that conversation, sometimes, maybe, I mean, just, I know in my line of work, we were able to persuade them not to leave. You know, I mean, if people are dead set on leaving, you're not going to be able to stop it, but if there is that, maybe just that little piece, that reassurance that could keep them here, like you were talking about the probation, I think that's a great idea, and thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
And can I, can I add to that? Personally, if I was looking at this data, I would tend to go with what the employee says, rather than what they tell their employer, because they could be trying to say, you know, I got another job, you keep me here, and I got another job, keep me here. So, that might make a difference as well, but I don't know. It just, I tend to think that the second one, the employee version, that would be a lot closer to the reality.
So, if you look at that slide, I think it's important to note, with the non-instructional employees, that the inadequate salary performance pay has risen to an eight, and it was a five and a 6.8 in the previous two fiscal years. That really stood out to me. And family or health is still at the top, if you will, for instructional staff. So, working in K through 12 education, you hear often this phrase about reinventing K through 12 education, and we're probably at one of those times in history where that might be necessary. And so, in doing that, the workplace also has to be reinvented for the employees to keep K through 12 education relevant in this area, and certainly around the country. So, that's why we have the slide reinventing the workplace, and we're trying to, or are going to try to reverse some of the trends that you've just seen in all that data. I mean, that's our role in HR, and recruiting, and professional development under Lynn Harrell, all of those areas come into play in this, and PD was not part of this presentation, but certainly can be in the future, if the board so chooses to know what we're doing to train people, which also allows them possibly to stay. So, the nationwide view of what we're doing to reinvent the workplace, or what employers are doing, this is also from Ed Week, and in October, and if you look at the top, it's quite striking, asking current employees to take on additional responsibilities. Well, we've, in a lot of ways in this business, been doing that for a long time, but we're even doing it more now, and it speaks to me, because we've bargained in four out of the five sessions I think I've been here for with Talc, coverage for planning time, coverage for teachers that are out, has been a huge issue in our bargaining sessions, and that's about individuals doing additional responsibilities and compensating them for them. Some of the other things that are on here are things, of course, that Ms. Rivera would speak to, but posting on social media, we've been doing that for years, raising wages, 39%. Well, of course, that's something that we've talked about throughout this presentation. Contracting out isn't something necessarily that we've talked much about, but within my group, we have a task force dealing with guest teachers, and we're talking possibly about going with someone that might facilitate that better for us, like other districts do in the state. Orange County stands out to me. Of course, filling gaps by having volunteers. We've instituted a process where Dr. Spiro has created a Google Doc, where we can go in, individuals in this building, to fill in for coverage during lunch, and parent pickup and parent drop-off, hallway coverage, so individuals in this building can help schools out when they put that information on the Google Doc. So, we're doing a lot of all of these things, and that's a nationwide view of this. Some of our retention strategies, and I just think it's important to point out that, I think since Dr. Savage has been superintendent, certainly since I've been here, I've said repeatedly, that one of the most important things we can do is keep the people we have. There has always been a huge focus on recruitment, and recruiting is certainly important, but right now, just keeping the staff we have is probably just as, or maybe more, important. So, what can we do to incentivize people to stay and incentivize loyalty? This is from a Harvard Business Review article in November, that talks about the top six items that they believe employers can do to keep individuals to stay. And there's a couple on here, the third and fourth bullets, that I would ask you as a board, that you can help us with. And two of them are elevate the company's purpose. Well, this isn't a company necessarily, but it's an agency and an organization, and certainly you, as the leaders of this organization, can help us elevate what we do. I think that's so important. Prioritizing the culture and connection to the employees is also huge. We sit in this building, and we have 100 schools out there, and what is our connection to that staff? And we're constantly trying to figure that out, but it's so important, right now, in this culture of the workplace, to keep employees. They want to know that they're wanted, they want to know that we need them, and so, that's a really, really important strategy. Go ahead. So, what are we doing to retain people? So, here's some of the things that we've done. On an ongoing basis, we provided a retention bonus at the end of 2021 to employees, $1,000. We are also, without getting into any more detail about that, negotiating that in the future. That's why bargaining is up there. We're also negotiating, hopefully, some additional compensation for individuals. ESER has given us an opportunity to do some of that. We are expanding mental health wellness initiatives through, we're rolling out a handbook that's going to be given to each school regarding mental health, things that can help the employees at the schools, that we're going to ask the principals to present to their staff. There's also the LIFT project, which I know Ms. Vaughn heard about at Insurance Task Force the other day, which has helped a lot of individuals in this district regarding anxiety and depression and things like that. We are asking district staff to support schools, which I already talked about with Dr. Spiro's Google Doc. We are attempting to create a more robust interview process for when people leave, but we also still are doing it. Stay interviews is another thing. Why are you staying here? It's important to ask people, not just when they're leaving, but why they're staying. Or, you could ask someone like me, why did you come back? And there are legitimate reasons why people do that. Professional development, of course, is a huge ongoing thing for our staff, our teachers, and the ability to do that, not just in person, but virtually, that means a lot to staff to not have to drive down here, or stay late at school, and doing it virtually. Some of the proposed things, and there's a couple of things I don't have on here, Dr. Spiro may want to talk about this, but we're proposing possibly a different schedule for the high schools. That would be something that might help retain staff. A no-meeting day in this building, gosh, for someone that has seven or eight meetings a day, I would love the idea of a no-meeting day once a month. There are companies throughout the country that are doing that. We're exploring flexible schedules. I will probably, in the near future, be bringing you a proposed policy about remote work for individuals in this building, or 12-month employees that aren't K through 12. The challenge here is in K through 12 education, coming up with a policy, because obviously teachers need to be in front of students. So, how do we do that? But that is something that I am working on. Guest teacher pay and benefits. I have asked our guest teacher task force to bring me a proposal to increase the pay for guest teachers and other factors. I met with Ms. Vaughn about this a month or two ago. It's an important thing, because with our shortage, if we could attract more guest teachers, it would help us immensely, and also help us possibly with future employees, because some of them would become full-time teachers. Benefits that support work-life balance, we've talked some of, to some of the board, we've talked to the board about this. Family leave, possibly family coverage under our medical plan, things like that. Additional career paths, that's about a career ladder for support staff. We have that in food service, so why not roll it out for paraprofessionals or other professions that we have in the district, like we do for teachers. Diversity, equity, and inclusion, that is important to workers today. How does your, how does your organization value diversity, equity, and inclusion? And we're going to work with our diversity office to hopefully expand some initiatives in that area. Fostering employee engagement, already spoke about that. Principals, all of us as leaders, including myself, need to talk to our staff. We need to engage them. We need to, I have quarterly division meetings. It's important for everybody on your staff to know that you care about them, to know that you're thinking about them, and what can we do to help their lives. And expanding support for leaders, this is the focus of Ms. Harrell's work in professional development and leadership, and it's an ongoing thing, but it can always be expanded, and it's going to be expanded because of some funding through ESER. So, those are some things that we're doing moving forward. So, this is just the statistic from, yes?
Sorry, Mr. Kittens, Ms. Vaughn had a question or a comment?
Yeah, when you and I talked, we also talked about the childcare
Yes.
aspect.
And that would be under a support work-life balance. Thank you. I just, I was remiss in not saying that.
I figured it was, but I wanted to mention it, because one of the things we talked about was, there doesn't seem to be a consistency among the schools. When I worked at Astero, I mean, my kids were grown, but there were, you know, a number of teachers, you know, a dozen, maybe less, of the teachers who brought their kids to school. I mean, we started at, they were there before 7 o'clock, and the elementary school bus for the kids came by, and what you and I talked about was maybe having a play, actually, it wasn't a big gap of time, but it would be the same thing after school, depending on what level the teachers were teaching at. And I know that those that had children in elementary school, I mean, this was a huge, a huge boon for them, because high school starts so early, and if you have young kids, you can't just say, hey, just
That's right.
get on the bus at the right time. And when we talked about it, you said not all the schools were doing that, and we also mentioned some other possibilities for partnerships with daycare centers and all. Has there been any movement on that?
We have had meetings with academic services about childcare in our elementary schools, not necessarily high school. And the focus there is, in some way, to try to provide our employees that, at a very discounted rate
Right.
or even free. However, the schools obviously fund some of their programs, or they're self-sufficient because they have people pay tuition for their students to attend, but we were talking about our staff, and that's what the focus of this presentation is. So, we have had those conversations. In fact, Dr. Desmore's weighed in and got involved in one of those conversations, and then we haven't had an additional, I think we had two meetings maybe, and we haven't had an additional one because of some intervening events, so.
And the thing about buses and allowing, is that something that's still allowed, but it's up to the school principal to make that decision?
Ms. Vaughn, can you clarify that a little bit? Remind me a little bit, yeah.
Okay, the easiest one to illustrate is high school.
Right.
Because high school teachers need to be there well before 7 o'clock.
Okay.
And if they have elementary school children, those teachers, and, you know, they may have a spouse, they may be a single parent, the bus hasn't come yet for their child. And we used to, I know of teachers that had elementary school
So, the bus would pick them up there.
And the bus, the elementary school bus
Would pick them up at the school.
picked them up, like at the entrance
Yep.
of the school.
Yeah, and I do recall you
They made a bus stop right there.
This is obviously something I'd have to talk to Mr. Lloyd about, so.
Yeah, and it was, well, I mean, it would be like any other bus stop
Right.
because it's a residential
No, I get it, yeah.
area, and probably, for some of the teachers, they may have had to select a school that was in
Near their children.
area. You know, if they live in Cape Coral, they're going to have
Yes.
if they're going to do that. And, you know, I mean, as I said, I never had to use it, because my kids were older, grown-ups, but it seems to me that something that small is a great benefit for those teachers, because I know
It would be.
when my kids were little, I had to take them to, because I had to be earlier, I had to take them to daycare, and they were at daycare for like 10 minutes, and then the daycare center would bus them, and it's just so much easier to do it this way, if it's permissible, and it really doesn't cost anything.
Right. I will, it's down here on my list, and I know we did talk about it, and
Yeah, yeah.
I think Mr. Lloyd may be in the room, so at some point, I'll have a conversation with him, so, thank you.
And can I, may I also, on that note, because I know we had several bus drivers coming in, it was not just about the teachers, it was about
Oh, I know that.
zones, different zones with daycare
Yep.
where they could actually drop off their children, where they could afford to because of their pay. So, I think we still have to continue to try to look at that.
We're still exploring that, because
Okay, I just want to make sure.
We're well aware that a large percentage of our bus drivers live in three or four zip codes.
Correct.
So, if we could So if we could offer daycare for them, the problem is it's very early in the morning. So we would have to obviously figure out a way to staff that if we're going to do something like that. But no, that's definitely a priority, and it's, I'm remiss by not having it up there because I've heard that repeatedly about daycare.
Right. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So from SHRM, this past December, the survey, and here's a poll of 110 U.S. executives, and I don't think we're any different, 65% of them were very or extremely concerned about recruiting new talent. So, and Ms. Rivera, if she was here, would speak to this, but this is very concerning and has been for a number of years. In fact, Dr. Atkins, Dr. Pruitt have focused on this in the past. But if you look at the openings for teachers nationwide, 83,946 teacher openings, and there's only 20,000 graduates from our colleges of education. Here in Florida, it's even more desperate. We've only graduated in 2019. That's the most recent data. We have 4,362 college of education graduates. So that means our focus has to be on career changers and other individuals who want to come and teach because we're just not getting the graduates. And in fact, yesterday, there was an article on CNN, which I could teach, send all of you a link to, but it says, "Teachers are Leaving and Few People Want to Join the Field. Experts Are Sounding the Alarm." So, and this is really concerning when you read the information in that article. So when we are recruiting, what do current prospective employees or applicants expect? And this has changed. It used to be pay and benefits, pay and benefits. Well, now the number one thing we're hearing is flexibility. Flexibility in their jobs, the ability to take a mental health day, family leave, remote work. I mean, those are the types of flexibility employees are looking for. And in a K-12 system, as I spoke to you earlier, that's somewhat difficult because it's hard to tell a teacher they can't be there because they need to be there. So can we do things like job share? A teacher teaches two days a week, another teacher teaches three days a week for that classroom? Yes, of course we can. That's not new. That's something that's been around forever, but we really haven't done that officially in this district. I think some principals do it occasionally with staff, but that's certainly something that we can take on. Can we offer employees like in the Spock unit? Can they do two different jobs, one in the morning and one in the afternoon? Yes, we can do that. And we've spoken to Spock about that and their willingness to participate in that with us. So the answer is yes. So that's some type of flexibility for people. Ms. Gittens, you had your hand up.
I was going to bring this up later, but in discussing with some of the people that are on social media with me, and we were talking about the Great Resignation and all, and I got some suggestions from retirees that are in their 70s that do not want to do, they were interested in subbing, but they don't want to do a whole day.
Okay.
So I wanted to talk with you about that later. And I was at an event on Saturday night, and I asked how many, you know, people were retired teachers and all, and how many might be interested in doing a half a day. Many hands went up.
Awesome.
That if, if we had someone doing, you know, a morning over here and, you know, once a week, a morning, two mornings a week or a half a day, that would help to cover some of the classes.
Absolutely.
And people were coming up to me on Saturday saying, oh, you know, make sure you get in touch with me about that. So it's something that we could do sooner than later if we offered that.
Yeah, I'd love to talk to you about that.
Okay.
The second bullet, frustrating candidates. So our onboarding process, and I did have a board member, I think it was Ms. Gittens, asked me that question for today's workshop, I'm sorry, for today's agenda review. And our boarding, onboarding process, if it, if everything is in from the employee, takes three to five days, so it's not long. In fact, last year, it was 2.9 days. So they are measuring this, and we are measuring this in human resources. Safety and health is important. Obviously, the pandemic is a significant issue. In this article, believe it or not, from CNN, there were people, teachers legitimately concerned about their personal safety because of gun violence. So these are real concerns for people working in schools. Benefits are more important than perks, like I talked about mental health and physical health, reputation for diversity and social responsibility, and growth opportunities. And that's one of the things we've spoken about here from the podium. When a teacher is transferring to an additional, to a new job, that might be a promotion, we're trying not to hold people back, although we realize that we need teachers in classrooms because that's what applicants and employees expect. So these are the things Ms. Rivera has listed as ongoing in recruitment, the in-person events, the virtual events. She did want to tell me that we are meeting with, and I think we had an inquiry from Ms. Patrica, about a company that facilitates H1B visas. She is actually meeting with them tomorrow. They've done work in Polk County. So that's something we're exploring even at this point. We've resisted in the past from doing that, but at this point, you know, we'll take or try to figure out any way we can to employ teachers. Some of the proposed things, recruitment bonuses, we've talked about this specifically, possibly for retired teachers wanting them to come back, focusing on bonuses for sign-on and relocation for others, flexibility, which I already spoke about, benefits. And then we've had discussions about billboards and mass transit advertising with the district. Dr. Desmore's had indicated a willingness to possibly contribute and use some funds to do that to help our employment deficit, if you will. I think that is our last slide, so if you have any additional questions, it looks like we have about 15 more minutes.
Can I, can I just say, I love that the visa, and in the hospitality industry, that's how we solve the problem of shortage. So we, country clubs, resorts, they go out every year, they bring in people from all over the, all over the country to work, and then once season's over, they go home. So there hence, we have enough staff to cover. So, and I did think, I thought that Dr. Peter Ginoue had said that they were bringing a group of.
He is.
People over as well.
Next school year.
Yeah, next school year. But I think that's something we definitely should look at. It's brilliant. I'm going to go to Ms. Patrica because you haven't had an opportunity, and then Ms. Gittens.
So my, the question I've written here is what about the company that sponsors teachers from other countries? So you addressed that.
Yes.
Why didn't, why were we hesitant to do that in the past?
The indications we got from, we have, this is back when I was an attorney here, from the East Coast districts that were doing it at a significant volume is there was a significant need for in-house staff to facilitate this. And so that's why we had shied away in the past.
Okay. And I understand that that's not a long-term fix, but.
Correct.
Patch the hole that we have right now.
Absolutely.
Might allow us to.
And that's why we're revisiting it, for sure.
And then this is kind of a related question, but an unrelated question. It piggybacks on what Ms. Vaughn was saying about working conditions and legislative proposals frustrating teachers and driving them out of the profession. Dr. Savage, to what extent does the proposed legislation regarding cameras or audio recordings in our classrooms put our students in danger? And what I mean by that is a parent custody battle. If the wrong parent gets their hands on an audio or video recording and finds out where their student, where their child is attending school, that obviously puts that child in danger. I don't need an answer right now, but if you can look into whether we've considered that, that might be a way to push back against that. Just for some reason, every time I hear our legislators talk about that, I think that really puts kids in danger more than it does anything else, and that's the number one reason. But if you can think of something more, I'd appreciate it. Those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I was going to say that we had discussed the visa program. In fact, some companies had sent some information previously about that, so I'm glad that at least we're revisiting it. On the growth piece, so we're looking at making sure people have the opportunity for growth. Have you considered, though, a caveat that during this time of shortage, doing the job-sharing piece, in other words, you might do on, you know, Tuesday and Wednesday, you would work in your new position, and Monday and Friday are basically our roughest days for getting enough support to cover classes. So maybe a gradual move into the position as opposed to plucking someone up and then providing that hole again in the classroom?
Yes, and relative to teachers, we certainly have discussed that with academic services. We've even discussed hiring the person for the job, but not letting them come to the new job down here until July 1st. We have. And so those conversations will be, will continue them ongoing. I'm happy to say, like today's job information coming to the board to approve for, approval for new employees or transfers, we don't have a lot of transfers today, so we're not seeing as much as we were a couple of months ago.
But I think if you, people will work towards hope that, and a promise for the future. So even if it were, you know, one or two days a week, even one day a week, getting into their new position, that even makes them a better employee when they do finally get into it.
Yeah, I agree.
The other thing, I was looking at the number of classes to be covered. I know this is getting into bargaining and they're, but I'm not going to get into the details. But if we look at the positions, like the TBA positions in each, in each school, and multiply that by the number of classes, in other words, if you've got five teachers at high school, and each day, that represents 20 classes. And if we can only get two substitutes, then we're only covering eight. There's 12 classes left that we have to scramble in the building to cover, correct?
Yeah, I have no reason to argue with your math.
No, I'm not just talking about the math, but I think people need to understand how, how critical it really is. And seeing those numbers, it's not, we get the vacancy numbers every week, but the vacancy numbers multiplied by how many classes that represents is phenomenal. I mean, people understand at one school, you may have, you know, 50 classes during the week that you can't cover. That, to me, would bring to mind how critical this is.
I agree. I mean, when I hear numbers like 20 to 25 staff members out on a day, that's very, very upsetting and concerning.
Exactly.
And just like when we have 14,000, 18,000 students out a day. Those are incredible numbers.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Patrica?
I get concerned about cutting back on growth opportunities for staff. I think that if we look at our sister districts to the north and to the south, and if we're allowing them a part-time promotion when the north and the south are not doing that, then we're going to see people leave. And the point of retention is to give them those growth opportunities. So I get really, really hesitant when we talk about holding people back with the understanding that the need is in the classroom, I get that. But if we're losing that expertise, if the institution, the organization itself is losing that expertise, I think that's far more dangerous. So I just would like to keep that in the back of your mind as you proceed.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
First of all, I want to thank you. I thought that was a terrific presentation. And looking at the data, the way you presented it, it really, really helped me understand what's going on. I have an absolutely unrelated question, and I don't expect an answer today. It's really more of a comment. My concern is that we are providing executive-level compensation. We don't have executive-level compensation in policy, and we don't have a protocol for executive-level compensation. And I think we need to do both. So that's just an HR.
And I think that's on the list that.
It's on the workshop list.
Yes.
But I just wanted to be.
Yeah.
Once again.
I know that we have to follow up on that. Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, we haven't heard from you. Do you have anything?
I just want to say thank you, and this was a really comprehensive presentation. I kind of know what's going on with teachers, and you really put it together. And Dr. Halsted, I definitely appreciate your data and the presentation of it. It was very easy to understand, and I think we just need to roll up our sleeves now and get to work and really implement some of the strategies that we have proposed.
Thank you.
Dr. Savage, do you look like you wanted to say something?
You know, I just, I think it's just more important to offer a comment here as well. So while we addressed a lot of the data and stuff that's in front of us, one of the things that's really going to be important for us as we really think about what's ahead is addressing some of the foundational pieces that actually create some of our supply-demand issues. So I would just put out there, you know, just the nature of bringing kind of different thinking to kind of existing paradigms is very, very important. Let me give you a specific example. We have the opportunity with technology now to really reconsider the way we deliver instruction. We know that students, we want them to come to school, we want them to be supervised so parents can go to work, and we want students to learn in an engaging environment. But what that looks like is kind of what you've heard through here, the flexibility of what can be done is work that needs to be done. It's the work that can change the underlying demand. You know, just simply the way we schedule our students in our schools creates the number of vacancies that we have. Just by changing the methods that we schedule, we can substantially change the amount of teachers that we need in various subject areas, at various levels. So it's really going to require us looking at a lot of these pieces, these institutional pieces and system-level issues that we aren't always looking at and that we need to be looking at. A lot of that wasn't addressed in today, but it's something that we are deeply looking at right now because as we are, we are deeply underway for all of the planning for next year. And some of these major system-level issues, if we were to be able to make adjustments, we may be able to dramatically enhance the working conditions because we wouldn't necessarily need teachers to cover as many vacancies. They wouldn't have to forego their planning periods, things along those lines. But it is going to require a lot of very difficult, you know, looking at these very, these very aspects that are in front of you here. The other thing I would mention is, and I've said this numerous times, I will say it again, you know, the major issue of like our transportation shortage right now, we have substantial, substantial shortages in transportation, not unlike the rest of the country. We see that everywhere. But one of the challenges that we have in Lee County is that while we have a choice system that we are proud of, where families get to choose their schools, the nature of the choices that we offer, and again, I'll use the example of E, Subzone E2 in Lehigh, because families can pick 17 different elementary schools in that middle zone, and we will transport them, that is simply adding to the issue that we have that we just, can we continue to do it? Maybe, maybe years ago, we could. But knowing how much, how much school families are even having to miss strictly because a bus can't get there to pick them up, it's just these are the type of larger system-level foundational issues that we look forward to bringing back here very, very soon, as we talk about any, any of the thinking that we must get into for next year. So just wanted to take this opportunity to bring that up as well because that impacts the bottom line as well. Not just the retention of the existing staff, but making it better for those folks who are here by addressing some of the underlying foundational system issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Dr. Savage. Ms. Patrica?
And just to follow up on that, Dr. Savage, I think that's going to require political will by the leadership team because any change to bell time or any change to the school that I get to choose for my fifth grader versus my incoming kindergartner is going to, those changes initially will be very difficult, but understanding that in the long run, it's, it's best for students, families, and teachers because we'll have enough teachers in the classrooms, enough buses to pick up kids and get them to school on time. It's all, but facing that initial resistance is going, is something that we really need to put on our shoulders and take.
And I appreciate you bringing that up, Ms. Patrica, because one of the concerns that I have is that other districts, we haven't brought them forward, they've only been kind of been mentioned anecdotally when school systems have shut down or when some systems have just stopped providing transportation or significantly diminished, changed the out, in fact, there's a bill in the legislature right now to change the amount of miles to walk to particular bus stops. People are addressing these underlying systems all across the country. The more nuanced our thinking, the better we do in this time period, and the more we as a leadership team are really prepared to make some difficult decisions, but really student-centered decisions, the more it can really have a tremendous payoff for our entire organization. So thank you for, for bringing that up as well.
Yeah, and the other thing you and I talked about was when the blizzard hit Boston last weekend, the weekend before, the headlines all over Massachusetts were, please be patient as we try to remove the snow because we can't hire enough plow drivers because there aren't enough qualified drivers. So you see it with, with garbage pickup. So you see it with, with garbage pickup in Cape Coral, you see it with bus drivers in Lee County School District, you see it with plow drivers in the Northeast. This is a nationwide problem.
Any other comments or questions? CNN?
Yeah, I just want to thank my colleagues for their questions, because those were questions I didn't have to ask, and also for your comments. I appreciate that we're all out there communicating with our staff and the rest of the public. And I think this is, it takes a village. So this is something that the whole community is going to have to be on board to improve. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, for your comments. CNN, other comments? Thank you so very much, both of you, really appreciate it. And then next on our agenda is Dr. Savage. It is the Agenda Review.
Yes, Madam Chair, so I'll go ahead and order that I have them here. The first question was regarding item H1, approval of the 2021 Head Start, Early Head Start Child Care Partnerships Program Community Assessment. The question was, please explain, quote, "While the priority of the grant targets results for students with disabilities, there will be incidental benefit to non-ESE students," end quote. And we have with us Mary Grace Romo to answer that question.
Sorry, we didn't give you the time to get up here. Apologize.
Did I apologize?
No, we should have done that.
Good afternoon.
Hi, take your time, sit down, relax.
Would you be so kind as to just repeat H1 for me?
Yes, I will, and just, Board members, with your permission, I would like to kind of break custom a bit. Usually we go in order of the agenda, but because I have a number of questions that will be answered by Ms. Mary Grace Romo, in the past, we have sometimes offered those questions for that person in succession, so if that's okay.
That makes, that makes perfect sense.
I'm going to go one question at a time for you, Mary Grace, and that way we can continue to try to answer these. The first was for H1, please explain, while the priority of the grant targets results for students with disabilities, there will be incidental benefit to non-ESE students.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. So I needed a little bit of clarification on that question, because I wasn't sure if that was a quote from the community assessment, I couldn't find that. But our grant actually does not target students with disabilities. We do serve 10% of our enrollment are students with disabilities, but our grant targets poverty levels. And enrollees must be 100% below the, the national poverty level.
And that was Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I'm looking it up right now. I thought I copied it from the actual statement. And so as not to waste time, I will get with you afterwards about it. I was just, was interested in the, the incidental benefit, so we can talk offline about that one.
Yes, ma'am, I look forward to that.
Okay, Dr. Savage, if you will.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. So the next question for Mary Grace Romo that she'll be here to answer today is for item H7, and this was the approval of the State of Florida Amendment to the Mirror Lakes Elementary Statewide School Readiness Provider Contract. The question was, please explain, does this have to do with expansion of early learning at Mirror Lakes?
Well, no, it doesn't. I would love to say that it did. This was a kindness performed for our colleagues at Mirror Lakes. I guess for many years, long before I arrived, we have been uploading their after-school and before-school school readiness documents. This is for school-aged children. It is not school readiness for our precares. We do have three pre-K classrooms there. And so I inquired, like, why are we uploading these documents? But to do that, you have to have Board Docs training as new principals come in, sometimes they don't have it, or, or someone on the staff. In fact, I'm getting ready to be trained myself this month. So I, I also, you know, I'm not able to upload anything. So I think over the years, former directors, because we do partner with them with pre-K sites, would do that at the beginning of the year with ours. But because some of the rate changes have happened, they needed to upload a new contract. So I apologize for any confusion. And, and I am sending Board Docs training links to my friends at Mirror Lakes. So hopefully, they'll be sitting with me February 23rd, taking Board Docs training.
With a strong hint to do well in the course.
Yes. Like, this is your last chance. No, I'm just kidding.
Thank you, Dr. Savage.
The last one I have for Mary Grace Romo is item H8, and that's the approval of the State of Florida Amendment to the Early Childhood Center Statewide School Readiness Provider Contract. The question was, please explain the change assessment composite scores. The amendment of the school readiness agreement for the Early Childhood Center is required to change the program assessment composite scores.
Yes, sir. So the Early Learning Coalition comes every year and performs a class observation. And this is a very well-known assessment of adult-child interactions. And this is done for our birth-to-three-year-old classrooms, and it's, it's a quality measure. It's a, it's a subjective assessment, but you must be certified every year to be able to perform the assessment. And it, it measures what is the quality between the adult-child interactions. So the state is upping those, those thresholds, and I have the number here for you. I'm going to, I want to make sure I do not transpose those numbers.
And that's okay. The, the general answer then is that it's the measure of adult and child interactions. When I saw composite scores, it was like, okay, is this a children's score or not?
Yes, ma'am. And, and it's for each classroom, and then we get the one composite score. And we, we have done well. I've, I've only seen one set of scores. We were higher than the state average in our last observation.
Very good, congratulations.
Thank you. Well, thank you too, to the wonderful staff. I have to give them the credit.
Dr. Savage?
Well, those are all the questions for Mary Grace Romo, so thank you very much, Mary Grace, for answering those questions.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All of you.
Next here, we have for item H3, it's the approval of the modification to the Florida Post-Secondary Comprehensive Transition Program Startup Enhancement Grant Agreement. The question was, is this position already filled, or will this mean a teacher taken out of the classroom to fill it? And our, our response today is from Mr. Todd Everly, the Senior Director for Technical Hologists.
Good afternoon.
Good morning, Board, Dr. Savage, Council. To answer that question, no, there's already two people existed in that. All this is, is an extension to February 28th for the currently, we still have about $60,000 sitting in that grant, and this will give us the opportunity to spend the rest of that. You will be seeing another grant coming forth for March 1st, and it will run all the way till 2025 for over $900,000. But that'll be continuing, and that'll be coming in front of the next board or two. But we already have two people, we're not pulling anyone else, it's to expend the existing funds that we have.
Okay, deal.
Thank you.
That was your only question there, Mr. Everly, so you get off easy this time.
Off easy, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Item H4, this is the approval of the Title I Part A, School Year 2122, Improving the Academic Achievement of the Disadvantaged Amendment Number One. Question was, please explain, remove Line 96 Gateway High School via strike-through K-code and replace with Line 97 Gateway High School as being submitted through B-code. So we have, Ms. Terry Kennedy here.
And I would have Oscar here to give you the complicated version, but the simple version is, okay, the PSES is our eligibility requirements when we send in Title I. When we actually sent the application, it was May 1st, and so Gateway, if you recall, last year was not all grade levels. So the K-code was just a different coding for new school and different type of school. So we, now that it's all four grade levels, we were advised by the director to, of DOE to change it to a B-code.
Which is?
Which is saying it's a traditional high school.
Full-out Title I.
Traditional high school receiving Title I funding.
Awesome, thank you.
And Ms. Kennedy, if you want to hang on for just one more minute here, potentially also be joined by Ms. Rita Davis for this next one, which is H6. This is the approval of the Farm-to-School Grant for 2122. The question is, please explain, is this a program for tech centers or K-12 schools? Which schools will benefit from the program?
Hi, good afternoon. And Ms. Gittens, you asked this question, so it's K through 12, it's a very exciting opportunity. It's a cross-departmental grant application with the U.S. Department of Agriculture. So I can read off all the middle and high schools if you'd like.
No, you can.
Okay, so it's quite a few. And a key component in this is that we're using two grants that CTE has already acquired, and we put that into the application to show how we're working with Food and Nutrition Services and also the Curriculum Department to really bring what schools are already doing, growing farm-to-table lettuce, et cetera, for their cafeterias, and how we can combine all these diverse opportunities under one umbrella.
I just wanted to add that it's a competitive grant, and as a competitive grant, there is a match requirement, and that's why we have specifically, it, actually, it can serve all schools because of the training, but the specific schools, we had three high schools that have a program, and we're using those three high schools to mentor three other high schools, because, again, the matching requirement of the grant, it's competitive, so we're hopeful to receive it.
And what were those three high schools? I know south is one, right?
We have quite a few high schools, though. Lehigh Senior High School, Lamp, Dunbar High School, those are the, the three a part of the, the training component. But the two matching grants also include Island Coast High School, South Fort Myers High, Riverdale High, Eastleigh County High. Yes.
Okay.
So the, the first grants are the ones, the first high schools that she told you are high schools that have already received grants, so the three new ones. And I know it's specific in, in the grant as to which three high schools are mentoring. Actually, I think I do have that printed. So the new high schools would be Dunbar High, Lamp, and Lehigh Senior. Those are the three high schools that'll be mentored by the three that have the existing ag programs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Can the produce be used in their culinary programs?
Absolutely. And actually, straight to the cafeteria. So what we're trying to do, and what they're doing such an excellent job, is obviously we're having supply chain issues, so why don't we, what we're already growing in our, in our classrooms and outdoors, and, and you've heard about the Suncoast Credit Union, they gave a tremendous donation, $35,000 to support outdoor classrooms. So this will be that matching component of it. And then we also had a member in CTE, Mary Graham, who applied for a classroom grant from the foundation, and so that's expanding. So we're kind of combining it all together, but one of the end games is to get that produce onto the lunch plates for our students.
And so I kind of tricked you, because I knew the answer to that question, but I wanted to highlight Eastleigh County High School and their culinary program, and apparently they have a new room out there where they're going to be having events, and the students will be catering and serving at those events. And so I urge all of us to, if we have events coming up, you know, I brought Marshall Bauer over and had him speak directly with Principal Robbery out there. Actually, it wasn't Marshall, it was the new president, Dr. Labota. I brought her over and suggested that perhaps, you know, a foundation board meeting could be held there on some morning, giving the kids the opportunity to, anyway, so I knew that they were using the mutt, the, the produce to, to serve, and I wanted to highlight that.
Yes, thank you, because we've combined hospitality and tourism out there with culinary arts. So they have both sides of the house operating, and that's how that room came about with donations from CTE and also Suncoast. So we're very excited, and they're so, talk about hospitality, they're so excited to host your meeting, and we already know how awesome the food is there from Chef Art Phillips and his team. So thank you.
Part, part of the grant is to continue the work and to actually form a team called the Healthy Living Collaboration Team, so, to do the work that Rita's just been sharing.
Oh, that's great. And if I, I also want to say congratulations to Ms. Davis, because the Fort Myers, City of Fort Myers had given you a proclamation for CTE. So it's January, right, is the month for CTE?
February is CTE month, and that's the second year in a row that Mayor Anderson has welcomed us to present an actual proclamation from the City of Fort Myers to recognize the value of CTE.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you for being there.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Yes, and Ms. Davis, thank you very much. Just also to highlight, we were at the Greater Chamber of Commerce in Fort Myers, and again, Ms. Davis, every, every single community partner in business, they were all were so complimentary of, of just all the work that we're doing in the district. And Ms. Davis is a huge leader in, in a lot of that work, so thank you so much. Ms. Kennedy, if you could stay on for one last question, I'm going to skip down, if you'll allow me, to L1, which is in operations, and it's the approval for the short-term incentives to address critical bus operator attendant need for the expenditure to transportation services. The question is, what would be the effect and possibility of taking the funding for this item from SER funds? So if you wouldn't mind responding to that piece.
Well, there are, currently are incentives, and I guess have been for many years with, with bus drivers, related to hiring, paying their fees for physical, fingerprinting, TB tests, and CDL license. As far as SER, it's an allowable expense, and so any of the incentives and these kinds of things, SER can pay for it. We have a committee, as we've mentioned before, a committee that looked at the needs of the district, priorities of the district, and then made decisions based on that, and that's an ongoing process to, to some degree, as you know, with amendments. And I, I know we have a, I believe, some scheduled meetings next week to talk about SER III. Does that answer?
That was, was that Ms. Gittens?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions regarding that? Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. That was all of your questions as well. All right, so I will drop back to the next area, which is under Business Services, under the I3, Approval of the 2122 School Class Size Compliance Plan. The question was, please explain the correlation between class size compliance and the larger class sizes based on the teacher shortage. And we have Ms. Kelly Letcher.
Hey, thank you. So there's a correlation, because when you, we're trying to make sure we have a qualified teacher in the classroom, not just a body in the classroom. So we're doing all kinds of things to try and make that occur. We're at our secondary levels, we're doing, teaching through their planning and providing that resource, but we don't really have that option at the elementary level, it's a little bit harder, and the students keep coming. We have grown 1,600 students since October of last year to October of this year, and they're still showing up at our door. We can't get the teachers, so what we're having to do is just keep putting kids into classrooms. Some of our teachers and, and certain grade levels have been very good about, they just want to make sure the kids are educated well, and so they're taking on bigger classes in order to make sure that the teachers have, those students have a qualified teacher in there, and that does affect our class size.
And the question I had, because I remember a few years ago, there was issues about class size, and when they changed it to the 25 and all that, whether we just went ahead and, and paid and had the larger classes and all that. So that's why I was asking this question. Has legislation or legislators thought about the fact that class size amendment in this time where staffing is very difficult to get teachers to keep it under class size? Where do we stand with that statute right now, considering that everybody across the nation is going through this shortage?
So unless they're talking about it right now, which I have not seen anything personally, they're still standing to the 1822 and 25 on the class size. I haven't really seen anything saying that they're looking at proposing making a change. So as far, we're still trying to meet at doing our best, but in some areas, in some schools, we really are having difficulty.
So do we have to, to pay the, you know, when you're out of compliance, there is a, an assessment?
So there's a process with that. So first, you file an appeal, and I filed that appeal about a month ago. I filed the appeal with the state for our schools that were out of compliance. Since then, some of our, I think, three or four of our schools that were out of compliance are now back into compliance, they've been able to hire teachers and put themselves back in. In the appeal, I explained our, our growth, because Lee County is still growing faster than even our surrounding counties. We are just busting at the seams. So I explained our growth, I talked about our difficulty in recruiting and retaining teachers. What we were doing to do that in some of the processes that we What we were doing to do that in some of the processes that we've been doing to try and keep our class sizes down. This is a class size compliance plan that is going before the state, which basically is the reasons that I applied, I had told them, and what the things we're doing to try and get back into compliance with recruiting teachers and trying to do what we can.
And finally, because I know others have questions, but is this something that we need to look at, asking the legislators to look at, because it's going to affect us, it seems, for a little while?
Yes, I would think that around the state, they have to be seeing this same thing happening in places. I think we are, we're getting the double-edged sword because of our growth, so we're probably feeling it harder than most of the other surrounding counties are feeling it. So, but any growth county is probably feeling the same thing we are.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I think the problem is that was a constitutional amendment. So there's, this is basically all the Department of Education can do, is try to enforce compliance with a constitutional amendment. So approaching the legislature at this point, that, we can't change a statute. So I don't, I don't know where we go.
Yes, it would have to go back out to a vote for all of the voters of Florida.
And this is taking place all over. We are not the only ones.
We are not the only ones that are out of compliance. That is correct.
Is there a dollar amount or whatever that, if your appeal does not work, is there an equivalent dollar amount that we're looking at because we are out of compliance?
There is. The state has not calculated that, but basically, there's a per student in the class size reduction dollars that will be calculated and will come through. And I do think I seen something the other day, and I can look at that and get to you on what the, if the appeal wasn't to go, what it would look like.
I would appreciate that.
And I can send that to you also, you have that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair. The next one, the next question that we have, and thank you, Ms. Letcher. The next question, I believe Mr. Dodig did answer during the presentation, but it was, the question was about, how long is the hiring process? How many days? And I believe he stated it's basically between three and five days for the fingerprinting references, and during fiscal year '21, it was actually 2.95 days, and they're still working on the original request regarding a form or something that could allow the information may be manipulated. Did you need any, you need him to come back up and answer any follow-up from that particular question, or was that sufficient?
No, that's, that's efficient. However, I am hearing, though, out of the schools, that it is taking longer. So he doesn't need to come back up. He can get to us later about it, but there's a disconnect somewhere as to how long that's taking, so.
I can certainly say anecdotally, during the summer, I heard it was weeks and a very, very long period of time, but that would have been when they were inundated with, oh, you know, huge hiring levels, and so, well, we can put together, anything to speak to that discrepancy, if you'd want, we could put it in the Board Weekly, if you don't want to dialogue about it now.
I just want to clarify. The question I was answering is, once the employee has provided all of their information, how long the processing takes in human resources? That's not taking into consideration someone that may have been hired by a principal, but they haven't submitted their references or something else that would be on the applicant's side. So that may be what?
It may be that administrators are thinking, once they give it to you, and say this person has said yes from that point. So maybe that's?
Sometimes there's certification issues, the person has to provide us those, so, but from the time, the statistic that Dr. Savage read, 2.95 days, is from when HR has everything to how soon we can get that person into a classroom or into a job. It's 2.95 days. You're welcome.
But I think it's a fair ask that, and we may want to characterize some of these typical pieces, because I think that is, you know, from a school-based standpoint, what were the things that they thought were clear, pieces that the school believes they had submitted, but, you know, that back and forth.
Correct.
I think it's probably good to get the life cycle of what these typical things are, just so that there is an awareness, because certainly, I heard the same thing. I met with all the principals, every single one of them, over the summer, and that was the number one issue, they said, was people they'd hired back in April, they still couldn't get cleared to work for the start of the school year, and they were losing employees to other districts, things along those lines. So definitely some information there, we'd be happy to provide as well.
And that might affect some of the data that you were presenting to us earlier about job satisfaction on their end, so.
And this also has something to do with something I've talked to Dr. Savage about extensively, relative to our processes in human resources, and something that has stood out to me in the four or five months I've been here, and there are processes that were here when I was here 17 years ago. So automation and things like that are certainly, certainly something we have to access and use more efficiently.
Well, and just to piggyback, centralized hiring practices, such as when you have schools individually doing reference checks on the same applicants, or interviewing the same applicants at multiple different locations, that's all being carried out by school-based staff. That presents an opportunity for organizational waste that we could improve upon. So there's always opportunities, but thank you for asking the question, and I know Mr. Dodig and his staff are well underway on a lot of this work.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Since Dr. Savage brought that up, has this district always avoided the central, the centralized applications?
Well, you know, and I have to be careful using that terminology, the centralized hiring, because it can mean different things to different people. I did use the term centralized hiring. The idea is a balancing act of what is the school-based role and the school-based staff, and what is the central office role? What is the opportunity to try to realize an economy of scale by, just, it's just a basic optimization piece? I mean, Rob, you've been actually in the HR area for quite some time. Did you care to answer?
Yeah, and I came in 2005, and that was how, the process we currently use is the process we used then. So as far as I know, centralized hiring has never been used here.
Is it more cost-effective to do it that way?
Cost-effective, I haven't obviously priced that out, but I think there's efficiencies that could certainly come into play. I know academic services, or at least their chief supports centralized hiring, and I think their principals probably would too, when they know more about it. And so that's something we're talking about. Let's put it that way.
Just as a quick experience that I had, when I came to this district, is I was used to, in my Texas district, centralized, and I was pretty shocked at, you know, trying to do my relocation from Texas here, and I was trying to get in front of it, because I knew the year I was coming, South Fort Myers was about to open, and, you know, I made inquiries on it, well, we don't have the principal there yet, well, we don't, this, and it really, I'm wondering if other applicants coming in from even other states where you have to deal with, you know, certification issues and all of the rest of that, it seems to me that that might be something that we need to look at. Money, not just cost savings, which is extremely important, but it may be, just be kind of frustrating to some people who are not local, and as I said, it was very frustrating to me in trying to relocate to the school district, and of course, in those days, 2005, you didn't have the, you know, the problems that we're having today.
Well, and that's precisely why I brought up that in the context of the question that was asked, because the question that was asked was the full length of the hiring process.
Right.
But the hiring process statistic that was shared, of course, is an internal metric. What you'd be interested is the totality from the time a person is theoretically offered a job till the time that they're actually able to go, because the HR is not just carried out in HR. Right now, it's a shared responsibility across the organization, and all the variety of tasks that have to be done, whether on the part of the individual applicant, I think it would be helpful for this governing body to have a really nuanced understanding of exactly what that looks like from soup to nuts, all the way through, so that we understand some of those challenges. And certainly, there are the opportunities to create efficiencies in some types of centralized practices. That does not mean it's an all or nothing. It very much can be what makes sense to do. So anywho, that was, that was why I wanted to bring up that specific example.
And that might segue into future workshop topics on this, because I don't know that much in terms of, I mean, it sounds like it'd be more efficient, and, you know, cost savings and all of that, but I was just looking at it from the point of view of people who are not, who are only familiar with the centralized, and especially trying to relocate from another state.
And there are districts in Florida that do it, so.
And, and just, you know, when you're relocating from another state, you're navigating all kinds of issues with certifications and all of that, so, you know, who knows? That might be a frustration as well for some of the applicants.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The last, I have, sorry.
Sorry. I have one more.
Well, no, the other, the other part of that was about getting data to, about some of the, the basic information, such as vacancies and things like that, that is readily available on the website under the Employees and Administrative piece. The reason I added it on there is that many times, questions that we may have, we can answer ourselves by just looking at the data. And since it basically is public record, I don't understand why we wouldn't have access to be able to look that up.
Do you understand the question?
Yeah, and I asked, and I've had a change in the HRIS position in HR, so, but Kevin Calfee and Christine Christensen, who are my HRIS, Kevin's now Assistant Director of Staffing, are aware of this request, and this, I think, was made in December. So we're endeavoring to try to figure out what to give you access to, and how to do that in a way that there's significant, not issues, but there's significant ways to provide information, because principals have certain information, HR has certain information, principals occasionally have vacancies, they don't post. I mean, so there's a lot of information that may not be, how do I say, consistent? So we would want to provide you the most accurate information, and unfortunately, one of the only ways to get a true accurate account of true vacancies is to call every single principal.
Right.
And see what positions they may have that they're not advertising. So that's a huge labor task that Ms. Rivera does occasionally, but that we currently don't necessarily do all the time. What's that?
I'm not asking to do that.
Okay.
My request at looking some of the information, when you look at that site, there's things like attendance and, and that uploads to that site, and just general information that we could, you know, there has like, what, nine different boxes of things? And we're not, I'm not saying give us access to everything there, but some of the generic information.
All right, so what I'll do is, I'm going to have a conversation with you offline, so I can pin that, maybe with the people that would be providing that, so I can?
Right.
Pin you down on exactly what you're looking for.
I'm just curious, because if anybody, us or anybody in the public, wants to see what is open, we have that?
The job opportunities, sure.
Opportunities are there for us to look at, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, we get into the weeds of?
It is not the weeds. There is information on that site that I believe would be helpful to us to see, and then we wouldn't have to ask the questions. So in my opinion, it is not the weeds. He understands, Mr. Dodig understands what I am saying, and he has said that we will discuss it, the specifics of it. If you go to the site that's listed there, you will see the nine items, and I'm not asking for all of them, I'm not asking for extensive work, generic, and thank you.
Ms. Vaughn? I apologize.
Dodig just said something that was very concerning to me. Some principals don't post. What, I'll tell you what my vision was.
Yeah.
Somebody has a friend at another school that's a great teacher, they need one there, and they say, hey, Mr. or Ms. So-and-so.
No, I don't think, I don't think, I would not.
Can't be done like that.
I would not offer that as an explanation why a principal may not be doing that.
How can there be openings and they're not posted?
Because at the time, there's not a necessity for them to necessarily fill that position. I highly doubt that's happening in a significant way right now, because we need staff so, so critically.
Okay, well, it just was like, whoa, what is he saying? That, because I know a lot of principals do, when they're new to a school, import people from their prior schools.
They do. We also have positions that are posted as anticipated, and sometimes that position is not needed to be filled, for one reason or another, so.
Okay, just that one statement, just?
I understand.
Big red flag for me, okay.
We good?
Ms. Vaughn, you finished?
No, I just wanted that one statement clarified.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair. The last question that we have is L4, Approval of Revised Phase I Preconstruction Budget Estimate for the G Weaver Hips Elementary School Pre-K Edition, and the question was, please provide a visual map of the location. I believe that map has been provided.
Thank you. I'm satisfied with that answer. Appreciate it.
Those are all of our board member questions, Madam Chair.
Did anyone else have any questions? I just want to make sure that, to give everybody else an opportunity to speak. No? Okay, Dr. Savage, was that it?
That was it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, next on the agenda is Ms. Sydney McClung, and prioritizing workshop topics.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hope everyone's doing well today. Nice to be back with you. For today, we do not have any items on our list right now that have not been approved through consensus, but I still wanted to come today, see if you had anything you wanted to add to it.
Thank you. Ladies, we, Ms. McClung is here to, you heard what she said? Is there anything that we believe should go on our list? Ms. Morgan?
Well, I don't have the list in front of me, but I want to bring up the fact that our graduation rate has dropped. We haven't discussed it in the workshop. We have one semester of progress reports. When are we going to see the outcome of those progress reports? I don't want to get to the end of the school year and see, and be surprised. I have a feeling that we need to be looking at more data now to have a better understanding, particularly in the budget process as we move forward, what our priorities are going to be. So I think it's essential that we ask the superintendent and staff to provide more information sooner rather than later about where we are academically, so that we can proceed with some of our other, the other decisions we're going to have to make with some foundational information.
Dr. Savage?
I wholly support that request. That's something that we've been doing data chats with the various school principals and really hearing kind of the story behind some of what we're seeing in terms of the data analysis that we're doing. And I think it's absolutely, I'd like to really fill up our plate with how the students are doing and how the schools are doing, because that really is very important for this board to be able to speak in a very informed way, and I couldn't agree more with the budget analysis piece, that as we look to the future, how, how does our budget really support the very important work that must occur? This has been a pretty long go with the COVID as well, and the loss of learning, and I think the data will showcase some of that, as well as we're in the midst of a big shift in the state in terms of our assessment system, our new standards. There's a lot going on, and a lot of opportunity for us to discuss that at this level.
Looking at the, I'm not sure, looking at the workshops and briefings that are coming, I'm thinking we probably could fit it into one of those.
We already have a couple of items scheduled on February, yes, February 22nd, we have an update on LVS, and then on March 7th, we have a strategic plan update, which would include that data as well.
Ms. Morgan?
So I think we need to bring it up with one of the, you know, by March 7th, and I think we extend the workshop schedule if we need to, make, you know, take more time if need be, or add a workshop if need be, so that we can get that addressed, because I just feel like we are so far into this, and we know so little, at least I know so little, sitting up here, about where we are, as opposed to where we need to be.
Thank you, and that actually was an item that I Thank you. And that actually was an item that I was going to bring before the board. When we were scheduling these workshops, we run into a real-time squeeze on those days because by the time we have agenda review, you know, which takes quite a bit of time, and then when we have comments, particularly on the briefing meetings, we have more comments, three hours seems to really be tight. And, and I know you know that you are here for a lot longer than that many days. So, I wondered if you wanted to have a discussion about extending at least the workshops. I know briefing's is difficult since you do run up into your board meeting unless you wanted to start it earlier. But during our reorganization, we had briefly touched on either changing the days or changing the times for those. And then it, it kind of got put on a hold while we considered possibly going to one board meeting a month, which is still on hold. And, and I have heard that some people may want to wait until we have Dr. Bernier in place before we make that decision. But I don't think that we would need to wait until then to either extend the time on the current meetings or add a day if you needed to.
I would prefer adding a day because I have, frequently have hard stops on Mondays. And my colleagues across the state have that on their calendars, and I can't ask them to change their calendar to accommodate me. So, I, I can't be here past four o'clock on Mondays.
What about beginning earlier on Mondays?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I, because my thought process is we, we have staff here all the time, and to take another day of their life, to me, is, is too much to be asking because they have to get their work done. So, I would rather come earlier. And then really, like today, we had an hour. We usually have an hour for the agenda review. Today, we didn't have, depending upon what is on that agenda, is how long that conversation's going to be. Like today, it was 30 minutes. We took up 30 minutes of that versus the hour, but we had scheduled an hour. So, today's time has been, like, we've kind of like got the stuff done.
Today's gone well.
Right. Today's different. But I just, I just would hate to see another meeting added on, not for myself, but for those who would have to be here for that.
Is there an appetite to begin at noon maybe rather than one?
Would you all be agreeable to that, starting it earlier? Is, Ms. Morgan, and then Ms. Kittens?
So, I'm looking at the schedule here. So, it's an hour and a half, two hours, three hours. You already have three and a half hours for the workshop on the 22nd. We're going to need, I would, I would like to think, a couple of hours to talk about where we are academically. I mean, if we're going to go over data and talk about how it relates to programs that we've put, funds that we've used from ESER to invest in our kids and going forward, where, where our budget priorities are, I think we're going to need more than 30 minutes or an hour. I'm, I'm suggesting that, um, I'm looking at.
March 7th?
Yeah, March 7th, Strategic Plan. Wow.
Well, March 7th, if we, we take away the, this part of it, the prioritizing workshop, and just put that in for, that would be an hour, so, an hour and a half, 90 minutes.
Wow. I'm just, honestly, I'm thinking we need another workshop, but that's.
Just for that particular, just for that by itself.
But I want to hear what others think. Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
Not a special workshop just dedicated to that.
Just for that.
Would work for me.
Dr. Savage, what's your thought on that?
We will accommodate whatever the board would like. We just, I think it's to make the clear linkage. What I'm hearing is the student performance, school performance, but there's got to be a specific connection to the ESER funding aspect of it as well.
Well, I, I think that's part of it. I mean, I, you know, we're, we seem to be approving things in segments and not seeing the relationship between the pieces we're approving. Now, I'm not saying that this, this discussion, which is really the strategic plan and how our students are doing, needs to be, that the ESER really needs to be a part of it. But I think as we move forward and we talk about some of these different programs, we need to understand the context in, in which we're making those decisions. That's really what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes any more sense.
No, it does. That's, that's, it does. Thank you.
So, in saying that, then, Dr. Savage, you would believe that it would be better to just have that one singular meeting just for that workshop?
Well, what I'd like to do with the board's blessing is get with Dr. Spiro and find out in quick what order they can, they can do this to put some information together. We've been going through a lot of it on the operational side. This is the nature of the work we've been doing, is analyzing that performance, school by school and so forth. And so, I think aggregating this together, we've, we've had conversations about the graduation rate, a lot of this work that you're just, that you have an interest in. I think it's putting it together in a governance level presentation, and I very much would want to make sure that it is a strategic plan focused presentation. I think I could see it being either at a briefing or a workshop, and I think we would need probably no less than 90 minutes to do it right and to have the level of questioning that I, I think the board would probably expect as well. But I'd love the chance to sit down with Dr. Spiro and the team at our next academic cabinet and then talk through that piece. I think they've heard this need articulated, but I'd love the chance to get the group to provide their insight as well. So, that way, if we'd want to focus on a couple of particular areas, I think the graduation's a natural place to start, but I, I hope that that helps. Does that explain kind of what I'd like as next steps?
So, if, if we were looking at, say, a two hours, a two-hour span for that, and if you could sooner than later find that, because then we can get, look on everybody's calendar, the girls can look on the calendars to make sure that everybody's time would be, you know, they'd have that a lot of time to do so, and then we could just come into, just to do that for those two hours. Ms. Kittens?
Yeah, I honestly, of course, I agree with you that superintendent can look into it. Rather than having another day, I am seriously of the opinion, if we need to start earlier or something, and scheduling is one of the issues that we have. I mean, we, our first responsibility, I see, is that we be here for the business of the district. And, but adding an additional day is, is, is difficult for everyone. So, if you're thinking that it takes an hour and a half or two hours, then perhaps, you know, tacking it on to another day or something, you know, I, I understand that some of my colleagues have other things, but we all do. And it should be a, a group decision as to, you know, an hour here or two hours there, or going an extra four, 30 minutes, or whatever we need to do. It should be a group decision, not based on one person.
Right. We're not trying to, nothing is, is going to be a group decision. It's not going to be based on one person. So, if we're looking at March 7th, say, March 7th, if we start at noon, we could go noon to four. That would take, we would have the 60 minutes, get rid of the workshop topics, which is right now what we're doing, and put, give that two hours there, and then you have the other hour there, and that takes care of everything. Is that, is that good for everyone? Because we're already scheduled to be here. So, does that work as far as, because we're going to be here?
It's a month away. It's a month away for us, so I believe we would have ample time to plan. It already lines up with the strategic plan update.
And we're already scheduled to be here. Okay, so can I have a consensus?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
We're just going to start.
Cancel everything that's on March 7th?
No, no, no. We will be here on March 7th. We have the agenda review. We'll get through that in the hour that we are allotted. Then, we do not have the prioritize workshop topic. We remove that because that is part of this, what we're asking for. And then the strategic plan update will be 60 minutes. So, between the agenda review and the strategic plan, which is, that's two hours right there, we add the two hours in between there. So, that's 12 to four. And we're done. The day's done. So, may I have a consensus on doing that and asking Dr. Savage to take care of that? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Savage.
Very good.
Thank you. And can I clarify, is this a one-time start at noon, or?
Yes.
Is there a decision? So, we're going to run into this problem on lots of days in terms of, you have a lot of, of things on your list, and we have very short time to, to do them. So, is there any interest in beginning workshops regularly at noon and providing a four-hour window?
Ms., Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I support it.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Mm-hmm.
You said you would support it?
Yes.
You would support it? Ms. Vaughn?
I live with it.
She'll live with it? I'm fine with it. And Ms. Kittens?
Instead of having another day.
I'll live with it.
And everybody's schedule's already there. So.
And that way, if we finish early, you get to leave early, but we have that extra hour if it's needed. So, that would be wonderful.
So optimistic.
It's the name of the game.
Yes, thank you. So, you'll take?
Thank you.
Care of that, Ms. McClung?
I will. Thank you.
As far as putting that on there?
Yes.
And Dr. Savage, you'll make sure that we have all the information that's needed? And was that clear of what, what everybody was asking for?
I, I believe so.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Okay, in saying that, is there any other, Ms. Vaughn, please?
How and when are we going to make up the steps in the transition process? I know I sent a question about it. Ms. Morgan has sent her recollection of how it was, and then some additional things. What I had asked about is, I would like to see steps spelled out ahead of time so that, you know, honestly, during the process with Ray and Associates, I was very unhappy with the way communication was rolled out and things because lots of times we had things that were in a rush, and then this person, that person, who has what, who's on first, that kind of thing. I don't want to see a repeat of this. So, I would like to see, this is the first thing we're going to do, and this person or this department is tasked with doing this. This is the next thing we're going to do. I asked Mr. Dotick, I had a very brief, just happened to run into him, and we talked for a few minutes. And I had actually even emailed him, asking him, what does HR have from when we onboarded Dr. Burke and, and Dr. Graham? And I don't know if he's had a chance to look yet, but he seemed to think that there wasn't very much, that there no, and I see Ms. Fisher kind of know, that there are no written protocols on any of this. And we, and rightly so, have been very focused on protocols and looking for areas where, where there are gaps. And obviously, there's a huge gap here. So, what's the answer to this in terms of how and when are we going to put these steps in motion?
So, are you requesting a workshop to, to develop that superintendent transition process?
I'm requesting a workshop or a briefing or what, I mean, it needs to be done. And it's not being done very efficiently with, you know, recollections from other board members. Again, I would like to see if there's anything in, in HR, there, there are legal things that, right, Ms. Dupree Bruno, there are legal aspects of this. And I know there was a question on, on that, on who exactly would be doing negotiations. I would like to see some kind of a timeline on, on this. I, I don't want to see it slipshod, and I don't want to see the huge communication breakdown that we had during at least the initial process with Ray and Associates.
Well, if I may, I'm going to have Ms. Morgan, and then I can respond to that because it's in-house now.
So, first of all, I would say with Burke, nothing happened. And I would say with Graham, nothing was needed because she was internal. So, for all intents and purposes, we're starting from scratch. And that's why I wrote the memo that I did, that we need to start now by directing staff. And I think what we need to do is decide who's doing what, and then they need to come back to us so that we make, and, and, not necessarily approve, but just concur with, you know, events as they're unfolding. Nothing was done?
No.
No. Can you elaborate? I mean, what do you mean, nothing was done?
Took over.
Well, Burke, it was a slipshod process that brought him in. I don't think the board did much. I wasn't on the board, but from, from sitting in the, in the audience, I would say not much transpired in terms of, it was Larry Tean handing off the board to, or handing off the district to Burke. He was a Florida superintendent. Nancy Graham had been in the district for 20 years. She didn't need, and she knew the community. So, as far as I know, there was no process at all. I mean, she, she was picked in one day, and she sat in one day, and that was that. So.
And then also.
Just saying, you know, when you talk about not having protocols and stuff, we do not. So, let's not, you know, we're starting from scratch. We have to write the protocol now, which is why I'm concerned about delegating it to people who should, can and should be responsible for it.
I agree. That's why I wrote the email.
And then Ms. Dupree Bruno, I know you've already started having communications, and I did speak with Andrea Messina as well, and how that we did not have, to make sure as far as, because they have done this numerous times. So, I, I asked her the question because you cannot have two superintendents, and how they get, how they do that is that one becomes the consultant, and that's how you bring them in, where they work alongside with the superintendent until that handoff is made, because then you're, you're being legal. But Ms. Dupree Bruno has had conversations with some of them, and then I believe Dr. Bernier is communicating with Dr. Savage as we, as of this moment. Ms. Kittens?
Well, I recall part of the discussion even with Ray and Associates in talking about the whole process, that there would be after the negotiation of the contract, that there would be an overlap time to work with the current superintendent. I recall them saying that. So, I don't know, I mean, have we just said, okay, we have a superintendent, and, and they're done now? What did they mean as a part of that process? What do they do? Is, is not their job, including until we have a new superintendent sitting in here to help coordinate? I, I don't know. But I do agree with Ms. Vaughn that we need to have some way of doing it. Because face it, guys, if we're looking at the legislation, if things go one way or a different way, we're going to be doing this again. So, you know, it's a possibility. So, I agree with my colleagues, we need something in place.
Well, if, if the legislation did go the other way, we wouldn't be doing it because it wouldn't matter. It's just they're here, and we do whatever they say.
But, no, they would still have to, they would still have to somehow or another overlap with the existing superintendent, even if someone is elected.
Not necessarily.
Well, put it like this, if there's a policy in place of onboarding a new superintendent, regardless whether they're appointed or elected, there's a policy of how to do it. And we might be saving ourselves a lot of angst and issues going forward if we have that in place.
True. And if, go ahead, Ms.
I don't think we're looking at a policy. I think we're looking at a protocol.
Protocols, right.
And if I may, through the chair, ask Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Morgan specifically, what are you looking for? I, I got your email, and I read it actually several times, and I got yours as well, Ms. Vaughn, and I agree with both of you entirely. So, we sit here today, we need to direct staff and then have them come back to us. What are we directing staff to do? And what are you looking at consensus surrounding? Please? Well, I think we need to have a plan for introducing Dr. Bernier to the community. So, I think we should be directing Lauren Stillwell and, and her group to, to put together a plan. I think that I was not aware of the consulting.
I was not aware of the consulting situation, but clearly that we need to get moving on the contract. And I think what I'm looking for from HR is, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm looking for some sort of parameters in terms of a total compensation package. I think we need to know what the comps are in the state for a district our size, for a superintendent who's a new superintendent. So I think we need that. I think we need these... I think we need that probably by our next meeting so that we can make a decision.
May I stop you and ask you if we could see consensus on each item?
Sure.
Because I think we work better in chunks.
But if I may, though, I would like to... Ms. Dupree Bruno, because she has already started doing some things, so I think that we have to hear what she has already started, and Dr. Savage as well.
Yeah, but I think our job is to direct them, not to have them tell us what they're going to do. I'm...
No, I understand. I just want everybody to know what has already been done. If anything has been done, I think that we need to know what has been done. And then that way, we can know where we need to go from there. Dr. Savage?
Well, I just wanted, before we get too deep into directing staff to do components of this, I just wanted to kind of just make sure I relayed to you that the very first conversation I had with Dr. Bernier, he's been working on an entry plan, and he is trying to get input, he's really working on that piece as well. And so I think just knowing that, I'd hate for staff to be working on something that may conflict with what he envisions. And so I just want to make sure that through his process, he's being given an opportunity to allow what he would want to weigh in on this, knowing that he is very respectful of the boundaries of the contractual process, and does not in any way want to move that forward. So I just think it's... I wanted to make sure I shared that, because that was part of that conversation before we went into directing our staff to be doing things that may, when we see his plan, may impact that. So I'm just... And I'm just trying to keep the lanes clear on what we would be doing in terms of staff and whatnot, but I don't want to jump ahead of our attorney.
So what I heard Ms. Morgan say was a plan to help Dr. Bernier transition in terms of meeting the community and things like that. So that is something that, from a legal standpoint, I certainly do not have any thoughts or ideas on that, or it's not within my purview. The only thing that I'm looking at is the contract. And I did speak to one individual who will be negotiating on behalf of Dr. Bernier his contract, who has sent some thoughts that he would like to have in his contract. But then I have stopped, I have not had any further conversations with this individual, pending board's direction as to how to move forward.
Okay, so we have heard, now we've had the opportunity to hear, what has transpired thus far? Ms. Vaughn?
And see, what's being said here is exactly why we need the steps, because you brought up something with Andrea Messina, and then Dr. Savage mentioned another piece of information. I think we've heard from Ms. Dupree Bruno. It's showing us that right now, we're off on the jumble of this person knows this, and that person knows that, and not everybody on the board knows the same thing. So let's figure out a way to say, we would like, let's say, we would like an introduction to the community, who's in charge, communication. We want to know what our new superintendent has in mind. Okay, he's working out a plan. When is he going to have the plan done? You know, we still need negotiations with Dr. Savage. What's going to be his role? How is that... I was a little confused. Who would be the consultant?
Okay, the reason I asked that, and I brought that up, it's not that I'm out there on whatever. I brought that up because I wanted to make sure that we did not... You cannot have two superintendents.
Right, right.
So I wanted to know, how does that work, where we can bring in, we can have two of them in the same building and speak? So what I was told by Andrea and many others that I spoke to who have gone through this, that what they've done is the incoming would become the consultant in their contract at the moment, because then they can come in here and sit with our Dr. Savage, they can communicate, they can learn, whatever. You put in a contract with them that they maybe come in, I don't know, twice, once a month, two times a month, whatever that looks like for us, to get themselves acclimated to the district and to everything else. But that avoids having two, and then when the transition, when Dr. Savage would go into whatever his role here, then the other one would then become. So it would be a smooth transition, and that's what they were sharing with me.
And what I'm saying is, that's a possibility. I'm sure there are other ways that can be done, but we need to have it spelled out. We need to, so that all of us on the board have the same knowledge, because that wasn't happening with Ray and Associates. It was very slipshod. And that's... And I think Ms. Morgan was saying, is saying something like that. We need something written down. We...
So let's write it down.
My question is, when are we going to do it?
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Yes. So we can't have two superintendents, and Dr. Bernier mentioned that he had some work to finish up in Clark County. So we don't specifically know his timeline yet. We'll have to communicate with him and find that out, find out what his timeline is. Typically, the superintendent will... The incoming superintendent will have an attorney who will be negotiating on his behalf with our board attorney. So I think the steps, in essence, are there. And then until Dr. Savage moves on and Dr. Bernier is sworn in, then Dr. Bernier would be the consultant, and he'd get to learn. Yeah, so...
So going by steps. The first step is, do we understand that Attorney Dupree Bruno will, as part of the negotiation process, include Dr. Bernier, Bernier as a consultant? I mean, do we all agree that we think he should come in in a consultant capacity? And let's just say yes, so that we all have that understanding that that's going to be part of the contract negotiation? Or a separate contract, for that matter? Who knows?
Right. And then once the swearing-in date is established, which we'll need input from Dr. Bernier, that will be the case. Then as far as introduction to the community and that, that can be handled by our communications department for us. But you're right, we need to write it all down, all the steps. So...
We need to have a salary discussion.
And that'll be something that's going to be negotiated with Dr. Bernier and his attorney, from my past experience. I mean, we have a basic amount that we offered, but each...
What is it? We approved it as a board.
We approved it before the selection.
What, the existing salary? No, we approved...
Before the job disservice.
When they went for advertising, there was a base for that.
Shame on me. I apologize, everybody.
It wasn't the true figure, but it was a base.
Right.
We had a base there. Because you had to advertise with that. Is that right, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I see that advertisement.
Yes. Ms. Fisher?
Well, so then, who's going to write it all down?
I volunteer, Ms. Morgan, because she's really interested in writing it down.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Kittens?
Thank you. I understand where everyone is coming from, and I'm sitting here listening, and this person will speak with the incoming superintendent and all. I think at this point, that we need to either agree that to have the attorney, since she's working with the contract and all of that, to speak with him about some of these issues. However, I think the main thing is, throughout this whole process, there have been things that we all didn't know. There have been things that happened and moving right along, and we were told after the fact. So the issue, and what I'm hearing, Ms. Vaughn, and I'm not speaking for her, I'm speaking for me, I would like to be abreast of what's going on in real time, as opposed to, well, when we have a meeting, I'll let you know. And I just, I really think we should narrow it down. If the attorney is going to be working on the contract, the attorney should be communicating with Dr. Bernier and reporting on a regular basis as to where we are, what's going on. When it gets to a point where we have to make a decision on something, then it comes to us as the board. I just, I did not feel that we were really kept abreast of everything that was going on. Things just happened, and they appeared, and suddenly, we're doing this, and suddenly, we're doing that. And I just think we need to tighten this up with input from the incoming superintendent.
So if I could summarize, I believe we have had a request for a workshop or a briefing around the transition process. And things that would be included in that would be updates from the board attorney related to negotiations, which actually would probably occur on an ongoing basis. And then Dr. Bernier has begun a draft of a plan that he would like coming in. So I would guess that he would be working with Ms. Stillwell and her team along with that plan to make sure that that, that his idea of how he would like to be introduced to the community and to the district, they would be able to work from that. So that would come as part of that workshop briefing. Is there anything else from HR that you would need? I see Ms. Vaughn and Ms....
Is it, I don't know the legality of this, but through the magic of Zoom, or through... Why can't we have him here live and have him the way Dr. Savage sits there? I'm seeing already Ms. Dupree Bruno's hand up. But see, just saying, okay, let's have him talk to Ms. Stillwell and her department. There we go. It's off to another whole department. This is our employee, and I feel like as board members, we need to have our hands on every single thing. And after we talk with him and get an idea of what would work, then we direct communication. Isn't that how it works?
That would be...
After almost four years, I think that's how it works, not to just say, here, communications, you take care of it. No.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to say, this is what we would like to see done.
So it sounds like you would need a meeting sooner rather than later in order to get that moving.
What is the legality on having him actually talk to us live at a meeting?
So what I will say is, I know, I would just, I guess, piggyback on what Dr. Savage said, Dr. Bernier is working on a transition plan. He has indicated that he has some thoughts. He's indicated that the way that he would like to, for example, start going to cabinet via Zoom, he would like to start meeting some of the other staff via Zoom. So he does have a plan that he's, you know, putting together, and that I'm sure he wants to present to the board so that the board is aware, and the board can, you know, put in their two cents in terms of, I agree with this, perhaps do this, perhaps do that. So perhaps the best thing would be to have a conference or a conversation with Dr. Bernier at the, at another workshop, so that the board is fully aware in terms of what his plan is, what his proposal is, and then the board can give input, and then from there, everybody knows what they're doing. And if other departments need to be involved, at that point, those departments can be directed to be involved.
So that would need to be a... I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Savage.
I just wanted to reiterate, one of the things that I really appreciated in my conversation with Dr. Bernier was a clear observance of the contractual side of this. You know, he reminded me, he does not have a negotiated contract at this point. So he was very respectful of all the boundaries, what were in play. And so I think that's something that I think is also a part of this. In my mind, he just kind of put it on my radar, that I needed to be very cautious in terms of having him engaged directly with staff. And we all have to just... There is a sequence to these things, and it's done for protection of all parties involved, including him. He's not here to speak on his own behalf, but he's a very extremely competent candidate, and I think he's somebody who, now that he's the selection moving forward, I just want to make sure we're respecting his boundaries as well in this, the role that he will be serving.
And if I can... That's why I was saying, the consultant, that way, there's no jeopardy in anybody doing anything...
Right.
And in addition to that, I can also tell you that his timeframe is not immediate. I mean, he has things that he has to wrap up in his current district. He has things that he has to wrap up from a personal point of view as well. So Dr. Bernier's not going to be here tomorrow. It's going to take some time. So I just want the board to know that. It's going to take a couple of months before he really can completely get involved.
Ms. Patrica?
And in terms of contract negotiations, I... That's where I think HR needs to come in. I think that if we could direct Attorney Dupree Bruno to work with HR to find out what competitive compensation packages are, and I'm not talking salary, because that was pretty well advertised. But I know that there are some creative clauses in superintendent contracts across the state that could be utilized. I would hate to be in the same position we found ourselves in when we were negotiating Dr. Savage's contract, which you came back and said, well, you only told me to negotiate this. I want to see the full body of negotiating tools brought to the table for this contract, and rely, to a certain extent, on your expertise, which would require input and data from HR. Am I making sense?
So I will say that the contract that will be the base for this contract is not a contract that we have used before. I have reached out to some of my colleagues who are also going through superintendent changes for a new base contract. In addition, what is important in terms of Dr. Bernier's point of view, in terms of what he would like, has already been sent to me. I already know exactly what he's looking for. So I'm comfortable with the exception of if the board wants to take a look at salary again and look at comp rates. I think Ray and Associates did that before, but if the board is inclined to do that, that's definitely an HR function. But in terms of terms, I'm very comfortable based on what I have already received from Dr. Bernier's representative, and my conversations and some other information that I have with regards to superintendent contracts.
So do we want to see about him sharing with us his entry plan then? I mean, that's something I think that would be imperative for us to know what that looks like.
Yes, but...
Ms. Kittens?
But what I keep hearing, though, is that the contractual piece has to be in place before we can talk about all of that. I mean, legally, we need to get to the point where there is at least some semblance of a contract before we ask, so what are you going to do? I mean, the transition piece and the contract piece are two separate issues that need to be dealt with separately. The contract needs to be done in order to move ahead. We can still move ahead in our shell or template of what we think a transition should look like. And then when it is contractually okay, look at what he has to add to it as well.
Okay, so are we looking... Go ahead, Ms. Dupree.
I just wanted to clarify, when I use the word "transition," for me, I'm looking at it from a legal lens, and I'm thinking of the contractual terms for Dr. Bernier, as well as the contractual terms for Dr. Savage, which also needs to be wrapped up. So that's what I'm looking at when I'm talking about transition, are those two contracts.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, that it's two, you know...
So what Ms. Kittens is... If I'm understanding, and maybe without a contract with him at this moment, whether it's consultant or whatever that looks like, we do not have the right to be asking him for anything?
Well, I mean, if I may, what, and God forbid, anything happened with the contractual piece, and it fell through. And then we have built our whole transition on something that is, has to start all over again. That's all I'm saying.
It sounds like we're discussing two different... It sounds like we're discussing two different things, a transit, a contract and an onboarding process.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So we have the transition in terms of the contractual obligations and whether, and then the consultant piece might actually be a separate contract in and of itself. And then we have an onboarding process for once the contract is in place, how do we go about the introduction and the actual onboarding of Dr. Bernier?
Implementing. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I think that board attorney and chair should come back to us within seven days, seven calendar days, with an answer to the question of, how will we provide an opportunity for Dr. Bernier to engage with us on a formal basis? And that can be, and the recommendation can be as part of the overall contract, if we're that far along, or as a separate contract. But at least, give us something substantive to respond to. So let's start with the piece, how are we going to interact with Dr. Bernier? And that needs to be done in a legal way. And then, you know, as Ms. Patrica said, bite by bite, we eat this elephant. But I think that's the first bite.
And then after that, work on the onboarding as a whole and the other protocols for what that looks like with everybody? So just seven, okay, seven days. Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, I think Dr. Savage has spoken with him and the attorney has spoken with him. Dr. Savage is the one that directs staff to do whatever. So I would say that the two of them should work together with him to find out what the potential is moving forward. I mean, I, I'm having a little bit of angst that every time anything comes up, it's being given to the, the chair to do this and the chair to do that. I think that's why we have staff and that reports to us to get that done and then come back to us as a whole group to.
Dr. Savage would not be speaking to Dr. Bernier about his contract. That is something that the attorney will be doing. And that is what was asked, to bring that back. How do we, how do we make that work where he can come in, which is per contract? It would have to be some sort of contract or agreement with legal for him to be able, for us to be able to have this conversation with him and then begin the onboarding and having that soup the nuts, making sure everything is, you know, in order with everybody.
Again, I will say that there are two separate pieces to this. The first piece is legal and the attorney should take care of that piece. Then we move on to anything else afterwards.
Any other comments?
I think we need consensus on what Ms. Morgan just suggested, do we not?
Ms. Morgan, can you please restate what you are asking?
So, as a preface.
Seven days.
You have information that you have gotten from FSBA and Attorney Dupree Bruno has gotten information from colleagues. So I think the two of you need to work together to come back to the board by a week from today and say, okay, this is, this is what we have learned and this is what we are proposing for the board. And so that next week, this time, we can have this conversation. Right? I mean, does that make sense? The only, the only thing I would change there is, this is not what we're proposing, but these are your options. Yeah, 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 okay, well, whatever. Yeah, thank you. And the chair to come up with proposals, just information gathering and these are your options. Perfect. Thank you. So.
And that's by the 14th.
Yes, so the recommendation is that the board chair and the board attorney return with options for next steps a week from today so that the board can give direction with respect to next steps.
I have a question.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay, so what, I mean, I've spoken to people as well, can we all bring back information on the 14th?
Sure.
Maybe send it, I'm sorry, send it.
Or send it to the board and.
Send it to everybody.
And we incorporate it into the discussion a week from today.
It'll be sent out to everybody. Okay, so can I get consent, Mr. Dupree Bruno?
Just for clarification, are we going to have a meeting to discuss this on the 14th?
We can forward the information out to everybody by the 14th.
Just forward it.
That way, that's the seven days and they all have it to digest.
And when's our next meeting? I was thinking we meet a week from today, but we don't.
Our next meeting is, I'll tell you.
I don't want to wait two weeks and I don't think we should.
Ms. Roman, do you know what the next meeting is?
Tomorrow.
Other than tomorrow, next.
Is there a deadline for the contract information with the attorney? Can anyone answer that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Can you repeat the question?
Is there any deadline or time certain for the attorney that is working with Dr. Bernier's attorney to, for the contract, for at least a draft of the contract? Do we have a date for that?
Well, our next, our next meeting is the 22nd. I just looked at that. Ms. Dupree Bruno, can you, do you have an answer to that?
So my recommendation to the board was that by March, that a final contract be presented at a briefing and then be presented in an action meeting. And in between that time, that the drafts are forwarded to the board for feedback and comment individually so that all of that can be incorporated. Even prior to that, if there are any feedback or concerns or comments or things that the board would like to have included in the contract, that be sent as well individually. That was my, my original recommendation.
So are you saying then, if I may, that there would not be a time that we would discuss as a whole, just individually?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
There would be a time to discuss as a whole. I think we, we could have a briefing to discuss it as a whole.
So can, okay, so can we put down some time certens? You said sometime in March. Can we just look at dates and say, backing into it? This is the date we want to have a final contract on an action meeting for a vote and then to back ourselves into that. When will we brief with a draft and when will we workshop with a draft that day?
Okay, so the 29th, I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, go ahead, please.
Yeah, through the chair. Attorney Bruno, do you have an idea, a ballpark figure of a start date for Dr. Bernier? I know he indicated he needed some time to relocate and finish his job there.
Yes, it probably, I would say sometime in the spring, April or May, one of those two months.
So we do have a meeting, March, the, a briefing on March the 29th.
So can we have, if that gives us, if we're looking at going backwards to have the final, but back into that, what other days are we going to set a workshop to discuss the draft? The briefing on the final, I mean, on, on the 29th, prior to an action meeting to approve it, we should have had some workshop before. And all I'm asking is to put that down as to a date.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
March 7th. I, I'm not sure what's on the agenda for March 7th, but March 7th is a workshop.
Yes.
That could be a day where a draft of the contract can be presented.
We just loaded that up.
We just put our, yeah, we will not have time for on that.
Oh, okay.
Do you plan to update that day?
And I'm, I'm a little concerned, I don't recall having briefings or workshops on contracts. Typically, contract negotiations take place back there.
Right.
And then the approval takes place at the table. So I'm not sure that we should be briefing a contract.
Well, there could be right before the action vote. If there's anything else that the board as a whole wants to discuss right before the action vote, we could do that and then have the action vote that night. That's what I was, you know, referencing, but Ms. Gittens was saying that she wanted something in addition to.
No, I was just asking.
But Ms. Dupree Bruno, you had state, so you had stated, once we get the first whatever, it's going to everyone and then individually, they'll be sending you the information to you if there's any changes or if there's any additions or anything like that so that they have that.
No, but we don't get involved in the semantics of the, of the contract. That's between Dr. Bernier and his attorney and the school board attorney and HR. We don't, we don't approve it and change things. We approve it if we want to, once it comes to us, but we don't work on it. That's not our job.
Right.
No, we don't.
Are you saying we don't get to say anything about?
Just a second, just a second, please, Ms. Gittens.
We don't work on it, but if he's insisting that we all wear red at the table every night, we can push back. You know what I mean? Like, I agree, we're not writing the contract, but if there is something in the contract that I have a significant issue with, I'm going to go to the board attorney and say, I can't live with this, I'm going to have to vote no against that contract. Right?
Yes.
So is everyone else in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, so, gosh, I like just lost.
I just want clear direction from the board. So I know what I'm doing.
So are we looking at bringing it back to you final, at the final, by March the 29th? Does everybody agree with that?
Well, I think.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I, I think that Attorney Dupree Bruno needs Dr. Bernier's input about his timeline.
I think she kind of knows that.
Sense of his timeline. I think if it comes to the board by March 29th, that will work for him.
Okay, okay. So can, can we agree upon March 29th as being, coming back to us by Mr. Dupree Bruno? Ms. Morgan?
Well, so now, okay, so I don't understand now. So we're going to hold off any interaction between staff and Dr. Bernier until the 29th? I, I'm look, that's, to me, the contract is different than where I started with my recommendation, which, which, my ask, which was that the chair and the board attorney simply bring to us a means by which we can formally engage Dr. Berner to work with us between now and whenever.
So we were working on.
That's true, but then, but then we went backwards. So then we went to the second question, which, right.
Yeah, I know, so I'm not, I don't know where we are.
So let's go back to the first one. You're right, Ms. Morgan. So the very first one was for us to work together, to come back to the board in one week, by the 14th, to say, this is how we can work with, with Dr. Bernier and the board.
Does that make sense to you, Attorney Dupree Bruno?
Yes.
Okay, so can I get consensus on that one, please?
May I please ask a question? So I still don't understand, how can we negotiate, how can we negotiate and work and plan with someone who does not have a contract with us? That's my only concern.
This is why we're going to come back with options to you all, to say, these are the options that we have to make that happen, where we can have that conversation.
But the 29th is when we would have the final contract. I, I, what I don't understand, bottom line is, how can we do this work with someone that we do not have a contractual agreement with? That is my question.
Understood. And that's why in seven days, we're going to come up with options on how we can make that happen so that we can move forward to the contract, the full contract. If I, so do we have any other questions regarding that?
Attorney Dupree Bruno.
I mean, sorry, Mr. Dupree Bruno?
So my understanding, just to make sure that I'm clear, is by next week for Ms. Jordan and I to speak to Dr. Bernier to find out what can be done in terms of him serving as a consultant until such time as the final contract can be approved by the board and he actually becomes superintendent. That's what my understanding is from the request. Am I correct?
We agree.
Options for the transition plan leading up to the signing of the contract.
This is what we're doing right now, we're asking for the consensus on that, on that item right there. So do we have consensus on that item?
Is he going to be paid as a consultant?
We, we don't know. We're looking at options and those options will come back in front of the board. That's, that's what we're seeking consensus on right now, is to get those options in front of the board.
So I'm going to ask one more time, can I get consensus on that? Ms., Ms. Morgan? Okay. And Ms. Gittens?
I can live with it.
Okay. Mr. Dupree Bruno, you understand what we're doing now?
Yeah, so my first, first step is to work with Madam Chair and talking with Dr. Bernier on options for him to serve as a consultant until such time as the contract is finalized and he becomes superintendent. That's the first step.
By the, by the 14th.
By the 14th.
Madam Chair, is there, are you planning to schedule a meeting next week or is this just going to be done through memo?
It'll be done through memo, we were going to send it out.
Thank you.
And so the next one would be, once we figure out that, then we will be able to have more communications and looking at the dates, possibly March 29th. But that's after we have, we're able to communicate with him. Is that, am I understanding that? Okay, I just want to make sure that that's where we're at, though. So that everybody's on the same page.
So is there still a request for a workshop to go over this process or are you going to wait until you receive the information next week before you move forward with that?
I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah. Mr. Dupree Bruno?
In the interim, do I have the board's instruction? I just want to make sure that I'm clear with what I'm supposed to be doing. Am I entering into negotiations with Dr. Bernier as well for his final contract? I want to make sure that I'm clear as to what I'm supposed to be doing.
Yes. Is she working on negotiations on his final contract as well? Yes, that's your job. Ms. Fisher?
I can't live with it.
Ms. Gittens?
Whatever the board decides. Okay, I, I need you to. Whatever the board decides, I will go with the will of the board. Thank you.
So I think, Madam Chair, I would ask that you, with the board members who had them sideways, to find out what can be done to bring them on board because what I don't want is confusion in terms of what I'm supposed to be doing and who's responsible for what. And then, so I really want to make sure that the board is on board as to my responsibilities.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
I, I think we need to take it a step at a time. If he's going to be a consultant and he's going to.
Ms. Fisher, can you speak, can you speak so they can hear?
Yeah, I think we need to take it a step at a time. If Dr. Bernier is going to be a consultant in order to communicate freely and confidentially with Dr. Savage and us, then, I mean, we do consultant contracts all the time. As far as his final contract, I mean, if he's not going to be here for a couple of months, I think, and he's working on an entry plan, I think we need to give him the opportunity to present that first and then work through his representative with Attorney Bruno to, to complete the final contract.
I believe he would, she would be working with both of them. Am I correct? You, you would be working with Dr. B as well as his attorney or whoever his person is.
What I can say is that the onboarding process, I think this is what the board is really concerned about and that's what we're trying to figure out, what's the way for the board to be able to speak to Dr. Bernier in terms of the onboarding and being able to talk to Dr. Savage and all of that. In terms of the actual permanent contract, he's already submitted some of his requests for his permanent contract. I mean, they, yeah, they're, they're, they are interested in starting to work on that and get that going, just so the board knows.
And Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, I, I'm not trying to be difficult. I, I agree with Ms. Fisher, it can get muddled. If we are, have him as a consultant at the same time we're working on a permanent contract, it just sounds a little bit scary to me. I understand what you're saying, but we would have to be very, very, very careful to separate the two. As a consultant, what are we working on? As, you know, a contract, what are we working on? So I understand what Ms. Fisher was saying about, you know, taking it a bite at a time. I, I'm just, my concern is overlapping that. And I know you're saying yes and we understand. And I know you're saying yes and we understand and all, but it can get kind of muddled up there if he's making decisions as a consultant while his contract is being done.
Okay, I think, bless you. I think there's some confusion. He's not making decisions as a consultant, it's giving him the ability to have conversations with us. That's what that consultant does. And this happens more, more than less where they do this, so that gives them the ability to come in, to start familiarizing themselves with their staff, chiefs, us, whoever, it gives them that ability. But in saying that, as Mrs. Dupree Bruno just stated, they already have started sending information to her and she has to, she can't just sit on that information. So that's why I believe she's asking, does she continue to move forward with that information and start working on putting that together, which I, to me, it's like, why would she not do that?
Well, if I may, I'm not saying that she shouldn't. The main thing right now to me is that we get a contract to solidify the fact that we have a new superintendent. This is when he will start, this is what he will do. That is the main issue for us to get done. The other part of the onboarding and having him, you know, have a say-so in, in all of that part, I just, and I would like for you to check with the people that you've spoken with, at what point is this consultant, is that after they have done a contract? Because my understanding from people that I have spoken with, you know, after the contract is done, but there's this period of time before they start, but they know that they will start, that there is an agreement, and from March something until April something, when they start is when they do, they, let me finish, is when they would do that consultant piece so that during that period of time, we don't have two superintendents, but they are able to overlap. That's when the onboarding happens, that's when all of the rest of the stuff starts.
And that will be the options that we will be bringing back to you. So, Mr. Dupree Bruno, do you need any other?
So just to make sure that, did you take the last consensus?
We took the consensus, yep. It was five to two.
It was actually seven, with two on the side.
But then we said that we were going to talk to the two board members that had some.
So can we take another consensus?
Well, can I, from what I just said, are you in agreement with what I just said as an attorney? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I do understand what you're trying to say, Ms. Gittens. I think there's a little bit of confusion in terms of onboarding, consultants roles, permanent superintendent, when that contract comes in. I have it clear in my mind, but what it is, is that there's one piece for the board, which is to figure out how you're going to onboard the superintendent. That is the board's responsibility. You work with Dr. Bernier to make that happen. He's working on his plan, he needs to present it to the board so that everybody can be on the same page. In order for him to do that, what's going to be that legal connection that allows him to speak to staff, allows him to speak to Dr. Savage, come to the board? That's the piece that Ms. Morgan requested be reviewed and provided options by next week. In the interim, you have already agreed that this is going to be your superintendent, so we need to start working on that permanent contract for it to be in place in time, because time is on our side, so we can do a really good contract and negotiate well, so that we can have that in place for when he starts. And you can have a smooth transition between your current superintendent and your permanent superintendent. So three aspects, I completely understand what you're saying. For me, it doesn't muddle, just because I can, I can see it, but I do understand how it can be confusing. What's this consultant going to do in the interim, that interim position? He's not really working as a consultant per se. He's looking for a legal standing to be able to talk to staff, talk to the superintendent, work on this transition plan in between time. That's my understanding of what is being asked and that's my understanding of what you're saying, Ms. Gittens. Does that make sense?
It does. I still have angst about the final contract, of making sure that we have a contract. I mean, what if he gets in here and he does, talking to staff and he does this and that and suddenly decides, you know, I really don't want to do this? Okay? So we don't have any binding contract or anything. That's what I'm saying. And I, I know it's moot because everyone else disagrees, so I just am concerned about that.
And you're correct, he can always, until, you know, signed, sealed and delivered, change his mind. He can always do that. And even when the permanent contract is in place, he can always say, I don't want to work, you know, here anymore. So you're absolutely correct, that does and can happen.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, so Dr. Bernier, Dr. Savage is our superintendent until Dr. Bernier is sworn in. If I'm remembering Dr. Savage's contract, if something happens and Dr. Bernier is like, oh, I don't want to be here, we still have a superintendent and we say to Ray and Associates, back to the drawing board. So I don't see that it's a problem. And anyway, I just wanted to clarify it for anybody out there listening, we're not going to have two superintendents at any time and we're not going to have zero superintendents at any time.
Thank you for that clarification.
If I could, Madam Chair, Ms. Vaughn is absolutely correct. So even in the permanent contract, the date of the swearing in would be the start date, the effective date. So Dr. Savage remains superintendent until such time as that swearing in occurs, which will be Dr. Bernier's start date.
Can I, can I make my joke?
Wait, let me make sure before you make a joke. Mr. Dupree Bruno, are you, are you good now or do you need anything else from us?
Because of all the conversations, I'm going to make sure that I'm clear and I get very direct instruction from the board. The board wants me to continue on with the negotiations of Dr. Bernier's permanent contract, if I may see, if we can have a consensus, Madam Chair, just to make sure that I am clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the joke was, given the pains look on Dr. Savage's face right now, I'm not entirely sure we'll always have a superintendent. That was the joke.
I'm so glad you made the joke, because I was going to make the joke. Don't, not so fast, but no, no, in truth, truly, it's, this is the work, I know this is not, it doesn't happen very often, thankfully, that you all have to go through it. I'm also happy to reach out to some of the more experienced superintendents that I know across the state and say, do you have any recommendations on how that works? So while we look, FSBA certainly, I think, is probably the best resource in terms of our state in terms of this type of work, but I would say I'm happy to reach out to them. Some of them have been superintendents in other states as well, so I'm happy to share in writing any best practices that I hear from any of my colleagues and no, I'm, I'm here until Dr. Bernier, so don't worry.
Sorry, that was, really was a joke, I swear.
I was thinking it too, though, that's the ironic part, so.
Ms. McFonk?
Yes, ma'am. Are there any other requests for workshops before I close out? All right.
So, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, you all have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
And we come to our closure, does anyone have anything for the good of the order, Ms. Morgan?
No, I'm going to bring some good of the order tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you.
Not right now, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, good of the order for today?
Yes, I'm going to, I'm requesting that tomorrow, I have a picture that I've sent in and the student will be here tomorrow, so I'm requesting the opportunity to present that student and what they did earlier in the meeting rather than waiting until my comments at the end, if I may.
You're talking about the student rep?
The student what?
No.
Well, this is a student that did something at one of the high schools and I just wanted to recognize them. And in order to do that, if they have to wait until the end of the meeting with school the next day, I don't know if they could.
I'm sorry to be a jerk, but we have a process for board recognitions of students and student achievement.
Okay, so in other, I'll just tell them not to come then, because they cannot stay until the end of the meeting. I'm just requesting just to, and the chair can do it. I have the picture and a short statement as to what the student did and I'm just asking you guys to give me the opportunity to recognize the student earlier rather than later.
Comment, Ms. Morgan?
I agree that we have a process, a way of recognizing. I am, I am loathe to step off that path.
So, okay, let me know then when, so it would just have to wait until my comments at the end.
Yeah, that may, yeah, and show the picture, yeah.
I just think that we have to be very, and I appreciate any child, whatever they do, I just think that we have to make sure that we're not setting precedence for certain kids or in groups, because even when we had one group come in and spoke, I can't recall what it was, but then somebody else had come out and said, oh, well, because you just set a precedence, now you're going to have to let us do that. They haven't asked us for that yet and I can't even recall what it was, but it would be in that respect. So I would be real leery with that as well. Ms. Vaughn, I don't know with you, what's your thought process on that?
Well, I, I think we do have, we do have a process and I think the time would be for, during board member comments and show the picture and say what the child did.
Thank you. Ms., do you have anything else to bring to good of the order? Ms. Gittens?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
No, thank you. You were going to ask me.
I have nothing. Dr. Savage?
I have no comments.
And Mr. Dupree Bruno?
I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roman? No, just kidding. Thank you very much. See, I have no other business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.